About like six thirty-two and I do have a form present. So that's what I mean of February.
Twenty-third, twenty-second, two-twenty-two, twenty-two.
Oh, that's correct, that's February twenty-second. So, uh, first order is minutes of February eighth meeting. Are there any comments, corrections, additions?
That's supplemental information, Brian.
Norm, do you need a motion to accept the minutes?
Well, I'm kind of looking for Dick to show up, he just locked in.
Oh, okay.
That you, Tim, I'm walking on the other side of the place, I'm sitting next to Marilyn.
Yeah.
Oh, Tim, you're there too, come on, knock it off, man.
I will apologize for item eight on the AIGP before we even get to it.
Okay, once again, any comments, corrections, additions to this of February eighth?
I look over and check them off. I have no problem with them where they're written.
Well, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So. Second.
Favors since we have a. I'm just, if you're already gonna figure that out since you have one, that was just a favor, don't we get the all call? Uh, Dick.
Hi.
Marilyn.
Hi.
Kevin.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Norm, hi. Next we have an A and R Maple Hill Estates, overstate parcel two.
Hi.
Proving here to explain what's going on.
Okay. This is a piece of land that's owned by Creed and Dave Ceserco. And, and the land that wasn't used as part of the subdivision to Teresa Drive. A portion of it was open space. So, what is happening from why we're here is the original parcel C goes with Dave's house, which is the big one, the big footprint on the, on the plan. Well, Dave, why he wanted to doodle this whole thing with Creed was unless of this lot here. He wants to be able to build a house with a nice spot right in here. Pretty low and, and it's a very nice area. He thought that that went with this because of.
Can you do twenty grand? Probably.
So this, this piece right here, this parcel C, right now goes with, with this as an estate lot. We needed to take that same exact amount and create parcel that keeps the integrity of this estate lot in the state law. And now this, these two parcels S and parcel C will now go to Dave Ceserco, lot number three, and become all one piece like this. Where you can put the house right in here.
So Julian, is, is that parcel C two, S and C and parcel C combined with the lot that doesn't have a house on it to be one super lot? Is that what you guys are doing?
Yes.
Okay, great.
S, C, and the lot three are all gonna be one piece that runs on Prescott.
All right, so that'll be, it'll be like a big boot basically covered. Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out, thanks.
Exactly, and that's what all these notes, all, they all describe so that the, the, the title companies can all understand what's happening on what's going through here. So, that is the intent of this. And we did calculations to show that we have still more open space that's required for the Teresa Drive. But still more than we really needed, so it doesn't change that. And I think, uh, there's nothing else you can do with this piece anymore. As you already saw this whole, that little fence line, because you can't have a fence in the, in the restricted land. Because this plan now goes to the Attorney General so that they can get the restrictions put on the open space, so they can adapt that. So we caught that for some time. So. Okay, what's gonna end up? Is this lot here exists. It's gonna grab this piece and this piece, because this piece here, as today, is part of this lot. That's how this lot is, I'm screwed up. So this, this, you're right. What's gonna happen is, because this is the state lot, I'm gonna need this, um, one point oh three acres, because that's what this was. So we've got this piece to go over here, so this estate lot's gonna go like this. They didn't drop off, Ceserco didn't drop off the color?
I have that here, I have that.
Oh.
Your color, you only want it up here.
I think part of the point is that this is easy. So, this will be Dave's. Pretty much, this, this. And that's in the state law, and you say in the state law, the ownership, because it needs all the rules. There needs to be triangles, and there's this, they have, he has all the front G's, so it's all, all set. And then the open spaces are all in here. No, here, right in here, so they're in line like this, because they want one behind the other, and it's such, it's a nice little model. That's the, that's the reason why he asked if we can.
Where was this? That the access?
That's just, no, that's just so that a fence can be erected between houses that were built. Because you can't have a fence in the open space.
So, so this is kept out?
Yeah.
I got you.
So they can erect. Oh, yeah, this, uh, is gonna be gate right here. So this, using the, the strategy that is, uh, usually you can pass it, you know, that's.
So, I guess I'll ask the board, this is where I'm confused. I get that this is Maple Hill Estates, which is the brown section and Teresa Drive. Where I'm confused is if this is an A and R that's associated with Prescott Street? That has nothing to do with Maple Hill Estates? Shouldn't this be like a separate drawing as two A and R lots? That's where I'm confused, a- a- and maybe it's just my lack of understanding.
These two are what we just created, this is already, the, the, the bigger triangle of that, what parcel C, if you can see? You have a plan right here, Tim?
Yeah, no, I, I see the yellow, you guys, I, I see the yellow and what you're doing with, um, with Ceserco's property, which is lot three, combining C and S? And then taking C two and adding it with, um, Ceserco's lot two, I get that. I'm just, I'm struggling with recording this as part of Maple Hill Estates? When to me it's a separate A and R, but maybe I don't understand because, because Maple Hill Estates is predicated on Teresa Drive being part of Main Street? Not Prescott Street? And these A and Rs are all in conjunction with Prescott Street? That has nothing to do with Maple Hill Estates, so that's why I'm struggling. How this, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, but it doesn't matter what street that, we're creating parcels and they're being attached to lots that are fronting on the street. So this is, this is pretty much backland that's being reshaped and, and divided up differently. So I have to create an A and R, because anytime you change any property line on a plan, an A and R, whether it was a ten square foot piece or a hundred acres? This board has to see it, has to be before planning board. So we created parcel C two and S, and this plan shows parcel C and also is exactly as on the plan that's already recorded, but it's gonna go to a different owner now. So it'll go to a different lot, so it's all gonna be in the deeds, how this goes, and this is the plan that they use.
And I get that, I, 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 I understand what, what you're trying to do, Julian, and, and I'm okay with it, because it's all legitimate. The, the tough part I'm having is, is it's associated with Maple Hill Estates? That was predicated on a subdivision off of Main Street.
Off of Maple Ave.
I'm sorry, Maple Ave, I apologize, yeah, it's not Main Street, Maple Ave. And all of this land that we're talking about, these parcels, were associated with that subdivision that was Maple Ave. Now we're cutting them out and putting them on property that's associated with Prescott Street. I'm okay if that's, if, if that's zoning, but I don't know that, I, I, I'm not, this is not my expertise, so I guess asking Dave or anybody on the board, is this legitimate?
Right, so, as far as I understand this, a portion of the open space that they modified is just A and R. Right?
Yes.
So the open space belongs to the subdivision, so that's connected to the subdivision.
Right.
That the open space has been modified, and then one of the owners of the open space is also the entity that wants to build another house lot elsewhere. So these lots are independent at this point in time.
And we're not creating any more house lots, we're just changing the shapes of them.
Oh, no, 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 I, I get that, I'm just, I'm trying to make sure that our eyes are dotted and Ts across, because originally this was all, that whole back area was open space? With the exception of the two Ceserco properties? And now we're cutting them out and we're adding them to properties?
Actually, not all of it was, Tim. That parcel C was always not open space. That was not of Ceserco's. So we only created those smaller two triangles.
Okay, I thought they were all part of open space.
No, not all of it.
Okay, all right, well, if the rest of, okay with this, I just, it was a question I had, because it's, it, it's associated in A and R with a different, with a different street? And it wasn't part of the original plan, and, and if everybody else, and Dave, it, it sounds okay, I'm fine with it, I just, I'm just asking a question? After, um, some learning experiences I've had in the last two weeks, so I, I just wanted to make sure. We'll discuss that on number eight when we get there.
You just clarified, I put some lang, the language here, it says parcel C two is to remain restricted land for open space purposes? As part of land owned by.
Yes.
And the next word is parcel C two are to be removed from open space parcel. You know what I'm saying, like, you know, this one says parcel C two is to remain restricted land for open space, and then it says parcel C two is to be removed from open space parcel two.
Yeah, Julian, the notes, that's.
Plus that one right now.
So it is parcel C two?
This will still be open space, we need to put the restriction on here. They'll put it on here also.
And will that say it on the plan?
And it's.
But this will come back with a, same, remain land of open space, and that's what it says?
Okay.
Or it will have a open space restriction on it, so we can't build any land, it'll just be a forest. Well, that's, parcel two and C two and S two are pulled out.
Right, it's just the verbiage, it could be right.
Right, no, I, this is right, this is right, written the correct way.
Okay.
So we're taking this and this out of open space? Because that was open space, and it's gonna go to this, this, to this lot, and to this lot, parcel C two. So C two.
Right here, that's what I'm saying.
This is gonna be open space. Open space, but it's been taken out of open space to go with this lot, so that's the verbiage, yeah. We have to have this part of this to make this an estate lot, but it's still gonna have the open space restricted on it, that's what that says. So we can't go and put a, a barn or something over here, this is, this is just a forest. But it has to be part of this lot to make this the state lot valid.
Does that make sense to you, David? That verbiage makes sense?
That's how it is.
I'm not sure, I feel like I'm looking at that verbiage, I'm looking at this other things, just to help the board understand. You know, all the things that are in play, that's why we asked you, the other recording player that are referenced here, as well as, um. How like, what she can have. You know, it also has the existing condition before anything exists. Existing conditions that present. So this is what's on the ground right now.
So. The other.
Right, right, they actually changed the minds, but, yeah.
Yeah, the.
We're twenty-nine oh seven, we're changing that soon.
So parcel C was originally.
Here. Is going here, plus this is getting treated up, and that is going there, and this amount of area would be one point oh three acres, is going out, right, a rectangular area. That's what happened. Currently, yes. Yes.
You see that, Tim? Yeah, I just, the, the tough part I'm having now is, in the notes, the, in the, in the last note? It talks about parcel C and S to be combined with lot three, shown in the plan along with parcel A and B. So my question is, if parcel A, which is those thin strips, are combined with the, the, uh, the lot three? Which is all the way over on the other side of Prescott Street? How do the people in the subdivision get to the open space? Because there's no way, they'd have to be crossing land, right?
The only reason why we made those little rectangular strips a few months ago?
Yeah.
Fence in open space that's restricted, under the open space restriction, no fences can be erected. But we created a, a, a line to put up a fence, and now we need the rule, so that's all that is, and then it could be, the only reason why it's there is so that we can erect the fence. And that's, can't be, I don't think what he's saying is that Howard would get here without going through here.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't see. There's no.
That, this is, we can call that open space, but it's not under the blanket of the Attorney General.
Remember, you know that? Yeah, what, what they, because we had to go to the state for this instead of keeping it local, like a lot of the others, for some reason, um, you guys wanted me to go to the state on this one. And, um, the state does not allow fences to be erected in open space, but the town would have, but the state would. So we, Dave, Dave, part of the deal that I made with Dave was that, when, when he sold me the land, he kind of traded the land, because he wanted to protect his, you know, behind his house and around his house. So, part of the deal is he gets the open space when I, when I'm done, he's gonna own it. So, I, I guess he misunderstood where the lot lines were, he thought that what Julian shows, is, is giving you now, is what it always was. So he was, he was in the process of gonna build a house back there.
Yeah. Well, my tough part is, is that, i- if I read this right, these, these small little ten-foot parcels actually belong to lot three? Which is the new lot that were, that, nothing's built on right now. So if somebody buys that lot, they basically take ownership of those small sections that are between open space one A and parcel two.
You wanted. It was supposed to attach to his lot, but.
It doesn't, so there.
Wants that.
You see what's happening? You know what, where, I, I think what Tim is talking about is, so, somebody is around here, this is the open space access here with a gate.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yep.
And here, but then, and then said, no, fences built here, fences built here, and then you can't.
Well, here, this.
You'd be going through his lot.
This, here, we're gonna make sure it's still considered open space, it's just not under the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, it's sort of general open space.
And then if.
And we're saying for that's.
Right, the only person that could build a fence here to here would be this person, or no?
Or him, because he owns this now, and he can always put it in the easements and that.
Like you have to have access to open space?
I, I guess what I'm.
It's not, it's not, it's private, let's just put it that way.
I turned out there's two kinds of open spaces.
You don't need to have access to them.
No, no.
But we do have it through this.
You do, but it's just one of those, right, theory concepts.
Mainly for.
Ownership changes at some point, right?
Yeah.
I mean, the, I look at it as, um, lot two is, is basically building a buffer zone between them and the subdivision? And then they're using these ten-foot strips as, as basically privacy zones to not allow the subdivision people to use the open space? That's where I'm struggling with this.
They're not allowed to use that open space area as we're speaking, because it's owned by one entity. Open space doesn't have to be part of the original subdivision unless that's how the owner wanted it to begin with. Like I had Moose Crossing, I own Moose Crossing, and my open space, unlike Lenny Daniels, Lenny had his open space, one, say there were seventy-five lots? One seventy-fifth of the ownership was one of the lots. I kept Moose Crossing for myself, because I wanted to use it for my own purposes, whereas open space, I couldn't further subdivide it, I couldn't do, I had restrictions all over it. But I owned it, so it was my open space, but I couldn't develop it any further, that was the route I chose, and that's what this route is choosing.
So, let, let me get this straight, and, and anybody from the board can jump in and, and, and help me understand? So this open space, parcel one B and parcel two, basically anybody that owns property on Teresa Drive cannot use it, cannot access it? Can't do anything with it, is that correct?
Right.
So, all right, well, then I'm not cool, that's a subdivision rule that's gonna get fixed? Because we basically just, we basically just set up buffer zones for people in town that don't want subdivisions around their houses, which. Okay, good enough, I, I understand now, I just.
You'd like to comment on that.
I'm struggling with how you can have an open space calculation when you can't use it as open space for the.
No, it is open space.
Seems like there's two kinds of open space, the kind of public communities, and it's open to a lot of people, and kind of the owners of it kind of will.
Right, the restriction, I think, is similar to, it's a restricted piece of property that can't be built on with a barn or anything else.
Good enough, there's a, understood, I, I see what we're doing, okay, thanks.
In the early days, when we first started the open space, I remember Lenny and I both tried to turn it over to the town? So the town could have it, the townspeople, no way. They wanted nothing to do with it, so there's a, so we, I guess we came up with, or, or at the time it was, you can either own it, you can keep ownership of it? You can have, divide it up by the, by the number of lot owners, so with this, six people in the subdivision, and each one of them owns one sixth of it? But it can't be built on, and then there was a third.
That's a landowner, that you can own.
Yeah, that was the first one, and then the second one, and I, I forgot what the, what the third part of it was, but, or who could own it? But it was never that we could turn it over to the town, so that's why.
You're gonna give it to a land trust.
Yeah, you put it to a trust, whatever, but.
Okay.
So, if you want to get into the types of ownership, there are five conveyed to the town and separated for park or open space use? Conveyed to a nonprofit organization, a principal purpose in which conservation of open space? Vague to a corporation or trust owned, to be owned by the owners of the lots, or residential units within the site development? Taken by the owner or other entity to use or lose in accordance with, like, section five? Any combination of the above four items, so there's no way you do open space in accordance with the open space zoning bylaw? Not the subdivision, but the zoning bylaw has the open space provision that contains, you can own and control the open space.
So, that's saying, David, that you can set open space up in a, a separate trust for the non-developer, so anybody can own it?
If you want to do.
Okay. That's interesting.
We're hoping to change this, Tim.
There, there's gonna be some changes coming up. At least I'm gonna try. All right, good enough, thank you.
I still need another explanation on those notes about parcel C two.
I don't get it either, I don't get it. It's just, it's not just me that.
It seems contradictory.
Isn't it totally contradictory, one sentence says it all?
Parcel two, C two, is to remain restricted, and for open space purposes, is part of land owned by Ceserco. Then, parcel C two and parcel S, after being removed from open space? Parcel two, the remaining area of open space, community required.
I think that even this has to say open space on it.
Well, that verifies it out, I'll write that down.
And this, does that make enough, I don't know, like clarify, you know what I'm saying, like, this one doesn't say remains of space, but he's saying up here, and remains of space, but it doesn't there, same with parcel S? You're saying both of these are. Or.
Does it need to even be, because we have one, and we have, so like, Chris, that one goes out, confusing all out. This goes to this, and these go to that.
I, I think that. I can, I can cross the line with you. Or it's just redundant, yeah, and you said the house, and that on the top of it today, but these two pieces are not open space.
This is.
This is not open space.
Right.
This is.
Yes.
So it needs to be noted there, I don't know, but, same as that's the main land of open space parcel.
But this area, we still have more open spaces needed for the subdivision, but it doesn't have to.
So.
If you remove.
I, I want to ask the board, lot three. Oh, sorry.
You remove it, what, what do you guys want? I think we remove, and then it's, that's, what was the acreage needed for open space assets on this?
Required. Oh, this area, we got three point three two, what's required is two point five open.
Only four of the six lots are open space, right?
Yeah, not even, because we're over in a TC.
That's what I said, yeah, only four of the six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah.
I, Julian, if I'm doing my calcs right, and if parcel two? And parcel one B and parcel one A are the only open space for the subdivision?
Yeah.
That count to me is coming up about, um, what is it, two? That's two point two five and then seven five? All right, so that, there's, there's, here's a, there's a three point. Sorry. There's your three point two, okay, so that makes sense there. There's your three point two. Okay, so that makes sense there. Your two point five, where are you getting that calculation from?
That's what's required.
No, it has to be upland or or less than fifteen percent.
We have to have a certain percentage that's upland or greater than fifteen percent. So in this open space, there's some hills. We had to take that out of.
So you took the three point two three and subtracted out um. Point seven three.
Yes.
Of hills. That's what you considered your your open space upland. Okay.
So there's no, yeah.
Okay. All right, my math is working now. But I do have one question. This is maybe Dave or the board can answer. The I'm struggling with property being not connected. For an A and R because lot three, is that right? And lot C and S are all gonna be combined into one lot. But also with lot three, if you read these notes, it's taking um parcel A, which is the quote. The the ten foot lines that aren't even connected to that property. How can that happen? I'm confused. I can see if it's connected to. I'm okay.
Should be. So instead of it being lot three, that should say lot two.
Okay, so that's.
His to his house.
Okay, so that note's wrong, then. It needs to say.
Lot two shown in plan book along with parcel A to be into this.
Well. But see that last note, note saying C and S are being combined with three. Should there be another notes note saying parcel A and B are in plan to create? I I guess I don't know. Lot parcel A and B. I I'm guessing those are the little ten foot lots. Shouldn't those have a note that's saying they're being com- combined with lot two? Is that correct? And I don't see that note. See those? Uh, it says parcel A. I don't I don't see parcel B. That's the only thing I'm. I'm trying to see where there's a arrow saying parcel B. I see one B. I just don't see parcel B. So somebody help me find that. See, I don't see a parcel B. And that's where I'm struggling with that last bullet in the notes.
What's the triangle? What's that little triangle? Isn't that parcel B? Parcel B is a triangle, isn't it? Am I looking at that?
I think parcel B. The the one that was uh.
I just don't. I don't see it on the.
B. Remember, we had to come back. That first we had the line going across the whole back and then we had it connected to a lot. That was. The seventy eight point oh six foot. But. Let me um.
Alls I know is you need to circle, keep making changes to this thing.
Yeah, well, I guess what I'm getting at and and this nor through you is. I think this plan needs a little tweaking before we sign it.
All right, yeah, let's do this.
This parcel B. There it is.
This is this is the prior approval. Modified the open space. So parcel B is on a prior.
It's on, yeah, it's right. Okay. It's right here. It doesn't show up on the plan because. Parcel B is right here.
It's another little strip.
It's another strip because it's going to your fence, a fence on that side.
So it's another, well, it's another piece of property that's.
That's here. All the all the open space is gonna be owned by Dave, which. He can cross these strips because he owns them, but the only they have so that the restriction from. Massachusetts open space restriction can be done with a fence. They won't want to put a fence on it. So that clears that up. So the only the biggest one is the. This one's staying open space C two. I don't I don't see how you can have two. Fully disjointed lots called the same lot. It's not. It's a parcel. You can't restrict. That's why we call it a parcel. That's what we went through when we were getting all those little things. Because you can't put a fence up there.
And also indicate that parcel B, that's not buildable.
Yeah. So, yeah, I I guess I I can buy my own. But I think I think what both the only one that left is whether this is gonna still be open space. It could take it out of the open space. The way the notes say. It's taken out of, but it's confusing on, yeah, because it was open space. Now we took it out. But then we're gonna say it can remain. So it's not your victory because right now, today, it is open space. We're taking that piece out of the open space land. And the other notes is we're gonna put it back in. So.
I'll bring the it's just this is hard to hear.
But we don't need that. Need that other restriction. If we choose because all this meets. So at the registry of these, I'm just gonna put a line right through this note. That doesn't count anything.
Yeah.
As a uh.
And I would think also, I mean, not to nitpick, is there absolutely no way you can fit that on there because if it's reference. And then no on this or signing this.
Norm, now you know, now you know why I like revisions on drawings. So I can figure out what is what. I can't tell which notes were from the one that we're looking at right now and which notes are on that are associated with this drawing. And and yet it says in the in the title block, it says plan of land Maple Hill Estates. So when this gets courted, is this gonna be the Maple Hill Estates subdivision plan? That doesn't make sense to me, does it?
It's not. It's not.
Associated with Maple Hill.
This is saying. We took this open space out of this parcel, out of the open space that the open space required. It's still that, is what that says.
C two.
C two, saying C two, parcel S, removed from open space, which here in open space now. Remaining area of open space parcel two maintains the required open space under the town of rotten zoning bylaws. But see open space activity.
What's that? What's that?
So that's what that means.
The double C two is. C two is the management's taking land from open space.
That's the one that.
We want to take that out.
We want to take that.
Not. It doesn't need to be.
Doesn't need to be. So I.
You want to leave it in there, leave it in there. Just.
No. Just assume take it off. But we don't need it.
We want to have more open space.
Again, I I think that last note is incorrect and that's gotta be fixed.
Oh, that one. No, that one actually isn't incorrect. The one that's incorrect is the second one down.
No, because how how can how can? So it's my law. It says parcel A and B are now associated with lot three, which is all the way over on the far right side. That doesn't make any.
Dave wants control over those fences.
That's good. And put it with lot two.
But he's intending on building a house on this one that we're talking about. And he's gonna sell that one. So if he sells it, he won't have control over those fences.
So how do how do we have A and R lots that aren't contiguous property? Somebody explain that to me.
They're not they're not A and R lots. They're parcels of property. They're parcels of land. They're not lots. They're parcels. They had a I had bought a parcel at my own house. It was a maple tree on it. Took me ten years to get that maple tree and then it flew over. It was just a little. Thirty by forty square I bought from my neighbor because I want that tree. And I created a plan and got that tree.
Okay.
Oh, it's not a lot. Don't the confusion of lots and parcels. That's why we call it parcels and not lots. So the only question to avoid is if you allow them to not.
So isn't a definite of an A and R creating a lot? It's not creating parcels.
No, A and R is changing a property line, any line. On any property. If I come and change one line, one inch, I have to come to this board and say I'd like to change this line or create a new one. Creating a new line of any kind.
Yeah, but.
If I could, it's permissible to create a parcel by an A and R. A parcel is not buildable. What creates a lot? In theory, the lot is buildable. So it's permissible to do that. Um. Maybe we can come back to a bit of a war of re-sresher slash primer on A and R and add some business.
Okay, I just.
The question is C two, right now, it's in open space. It doesn't need to be an open space. It could be out of this lot or if you guys rather. I think Dave would rather have it pretty clear, but. Yet he's really interested in these pieces, so I don't want somebody to be here, but not. It doesn't need to be open space in this week's all was only as it sits and I would cross off that one.
Okay.
I want to know. If that's all right.
This will go with this.
Yes, that's going with this. And this is going with this.
All right.
That sounds good.
So fix it and bring it back next time.
Is it that's a desire with the with the void? That's. That means, so. I think not that one. No, that clears that right up. Just a line. That's all I have to do on the plan is take a line.
What's that? That's why.
That is commonly. I agree. There's always something. How many times do I write? Not a buildable lot or.
We we have accepted that kind of thing before. Not not for something just like this, but. We have we have accepted. And things have changed.
So you're gonna do that, but also I want I want you to go around and and do it. So I want him to do it in. We have to have five of these things. We do. Not a parcel. I'll do them all. Do them all.
Well, no, just wanna make sure we did the right one.
Right, this is.
So Norm, I do got one other question. With this subdivision, because all of this open space is changed around. Do do we have to modify the homeowner's agreement for this?
Oh. There is one for the open space.
Yeah, it's the second one. Parcel C two is restricted land for open space purposes and proud of land owned by that. Just cross that right up.
Want a piece of my file? Get that turned over fast.
Just one other comment. Um. Having the opening board office when Mrs. Zurico was up there. And we discussed the fee to the A and R. And I was left with the impression that no new lot lines were being created.
Okay.
Apparently, we went back and looked at this. There are.
Dave owes you some money.
With that, I was prepared to suggest to the planning board that the A and R could be the simple three hundred dollar. You think?
Three thousand?
Yes. Simply because there there were no lot.
You can't.
That's not the case. So.
So close. I thought it was over.
Both have to get up and run to do our stuff.
Somebody thinks they're muted and they're not. Who is that, Ronnie? Yeah. Yeah, what's going on over there? I walked in. Got the big room.
Okay, B uh looks need to be four hundred and fifty dollars.
He's not here, so. Dave will bring it up.
He definitely will.
Yeah, it's just.
If you sign this, then we go to pick it up.
Yeah. Trade trade checks.
Works for me.
I was gonna say I could text him right now. Yeah, don't run away with that.
Yes, we are. Making a motion to endorse the plans of making a little state. It says right there with corrections.
Motion in second. Is there any discussion? Here none. All in favor? Tim? Move on, Kevin.
Hi.
Dick?
Hi.
Yeah?
Who's muted?
Tim, you're muted.
Okay, can you hear me now? Yes.
Motion, Jerry.
Thank you. No, this is I can't.
Not allowed.
Thank you guys very, very much.
Okay.
Just don't come back soon.
No.
No, I'm passing. So Mike Maloney is on. I don't know how many questions you guys have for him. If you wanted to ask him up in now, I'm okay with you delaying this past that, but if you want to wait. Because you can't take it out of order, that's fine too. I just.
Anybody have any direction to taking it out of order? We're way past our public hearing time, but.
It's uh, in my case, I gotta be here for both, so.
It doesn't matter to me.
This would be skipping up to Britton's face. Okay, uh, with that. We do have Mike on there.
Yeah, he's muted, but he's on there. I can see him.
Okay, um.
He's on you.
Uh, the reason I guess we've asked Mike to be here is just to kind of give us. Uh, some update and it needed some clarification regarding particularly the level crossings. Uh, on Britton State, I know we have recently gotten some reports on the construction. And we have also just recently received some detailed plans. Although, so I'm just gonna open it up to the rest of the board, does anybody have any questions? Well, I'll start, I'll start first, is there any construction going on at the present time?
Is it, this is Mike Maroney, is that a question for me?
It is.
I believe because of the, you know, because of the weather. The contractor has has been unable to pour the concrete on the head wall. Uh, that he was forming, but. When the, you know, he hasn't stopped the construction, he's just waiting for the weather to improve. And and then he'll pour the concrete for the. For the first head wall. And after that, of course, he'll move across the way and begin forming up the the other head wall.
I I know one of our. Board members had some question about the exposed rebar. Uh, having been up there, you know, through the winter season, whether it will become significantly rusted before they get the concrete.
They may get some surface rust, but. Not, it it's not significant enough to. Now, I guess inhibit its its function.
Anything else, any other board members, Tim?
Um, Norm, the only thing I I wanna. Infer is I've looked over these plans, they're great, I I see Mike's endorsed. The 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 foundation wall and then is somebody else for like the, and maybe Mike, this is is. Is you is like the um. The overall design and then the culvert spacing grades, are you guy, are you gonna stamp that at a later time and then? Submit that as part of the subdivision plans?
My, yeah, I'm I'm willing to do what what. I guess you'd say whatever is needed. My understanding is that. In addition to designing the head walls, it was my job and I have done it. To review the the work done by the other three engineers on the project. And. Write a letter to Quinn Engineer, I have written a letter to Quinn Engineering. I've been basically saying that it, you know, these designs conform to the mass DOT. Specifications for this type of construction.
We get, and Mike, maybe I'm wrong, and and this might be something for, I can ask Joe, but. I would have expected for these can, these structural drawings from MVA Engineering Company?
Yep, that's me, that's my company.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was looking for like a structural engineering PE stamp, since these are actual design plans.
Yes.
Wrong?
No, you're you're certainly entitled to have a stamp set. And I'm kind of surprised that I didn't do that, but you're certainly entitled to that, and I will see to it that I. Get you, get you a properly stamped set.
Excellent, cuz all I wanna do is, again, I'm dotting the i's and crossing the t's that. Get these into our our subdivision plans, so down the road. Five years, ten years, whatever, if if Director Buckley's still here, or we've got another DPW chief. They've got something to go back on, if they've got to do any repairs or updates with mass. And cuz I know once we get this built, I I'm not sure if mass. DOT comes in and does an inspection and then they can put it on the rolls for repairs, I I I don't know how that process works.
Yeah, well, certainly for my part, I I've done the work and I and I will put my seal on it.
Okay, that's all I was looking for, other than that, and then this is my, Mike, this isn't directed at you, this is at. Our developer. From now on, and again, the board can tell me, shut up anytime.
Can I, no, I'm just kidding.
Have gotta be, I'm gonna say for the fourth time, the fifth time, have gotta be part of the design. That we get before anything starts on any subdivision. And that that's gonna be my stickling point from now on, and and Cle, this isn't you, directed at you, it's any developer that comes into Rutland. They're gonna have a complete set of packages before they start with the first tree being cut down in a subdivision.
And so, with that, this is Mike Maroney again. With that said, there are, there are two more, I guess you'd say two more culverts. That I'm to begin fairly soon and. Uh, I'll see to it that that my work gets forwarded to you before. Before the construction starts.
It needs to go to Dave George and Dave can get it to us.
Okay, that's.
Mike, I I appreciate you talking to Joe Buckley, I I I sort of. I relied on him being another PE, I'm an electrical engineer, but I'm not a PE, so I wanted, I wanted to have him do his discussion with you. To make sure we were, you know, everything's dotted and crossed. And it's sort of out of the process, cuz he really shouldn't be involved in this, cuz it it's still in construction, so. But I just wanted to make it a point that from now on. And I'll, the board can do, but me personally, I'm gonna push for having everything complete before we bless. Bless anything, cuz we're six, eight months into this project, and I appreciate these drawings, I do, they're great, but. We didn't have any of this to review or know what was going on when we started, so thank God you're a hell of a structural engineer and we don't have to worry, but.
Thank you.
We we can't depend on that in the town of Rutland for every developer that comes in, so. I just, I wanna make it clear that I am meant about no more, yeah, yeah, we'll get the drawings eventually, no, that's done, in my mind. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but that's my opinion, alright, I've done my tirade.
One number eight. Number eight on that thing, that's been satisfied.
Number eight on what?
We're talking about. This is, this, Mr. Quinn's. Number twenty seven, and the thing that says about the inlet rate calculation question justified to date, those calculations have not been provided. Paved spacing may be reasonable, but calculation should be provided to justify the additional spacing. Has that been done?
We're in the process of, is this the one from December?
Yeah.
We're in the process of answering that right now, cuz there's some other ones in there that, where there's only two feet of cover on the sewer, is that, is that that one? Yeah, the, the, Hannigan is is answering those to Quinn now, he's working on the answers, so a lot of that hasn't been, hasn't been done, right, yeah.
So Cle will be expecting a letter from Hannigan with with basically subbullets to all nine of these with answers?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Working on that now.
Sorry, if I could just also add to that, I had a conversation with Carl Holtren, it's been the last couple of days. As obviously we're disindicated, he had to get that, in the process of reviewing these. He had a question copy of this document in a Word version so that they can go back and amend it relative to each of the particular comments. So that's in progress, and it'll be delivered to the horse, I guess it's possible, it's within the next week or two or whatever. The case may be, so that's in the progress.
Can I answer one of Tim's questions tonight? So Tim, now you said. The about the money, how to repair these and who takes care of it and stuff like that, that was a question.
Yeah, yeah, I I don't know the logistics of it, I'm, Gary explained it to me at one time with the bridge, but I don't know on the culverts, I don't have any experience with that with DOT.
If it doesn't meet DOT standards, that's why, I don't know, years ago, when we went through that thing with the bridge, you made it so that. We didn't have any more bridges and that they had to meet DOC, DOT standards, that what Mike Maroney's. Original charge was to make sure that it meet, met the DOT standards, and a lot of this redesign. That had to be done was because the planet that submitted. By the people who build the culverts, which is Lane, that build the drains pipe. It it didn't meet DOT standards in mass, cuz they're they're a New York company, so there was too much fill on top of it. They only allowed five feet when there was six feet, that's why all this redesign had to happen, that's why there's only two feet of cover, all because it didn't meet the DOT standard, once it meets the DOT standards. It comes chapter ninety money covers it.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I just, that's what that's all about, that's all, I just wanted to, you know, clarify that, that's all.
I appreciate it, I just, I I I gotta say from now on. If need be, we're gonna have to be more diligent to make sure, and again, I'm not, Cle, I'm not directing this to you, I'm just saying in general. All developers in Rutland, when they come in, before they get started, they've got to have a complete set of plans, I just, we're we're just. Yeah, that's just my opinion.
Okay, anything else? We're having the rules states. Okay, Mr. Maroney, thank you for appearing.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Yes, you do the same.
Some position shift like this, cuz I just wanna make sure I have this right, so the board had made several requests to staff. Therefore, those request the applicant, I just wanna know if those requests have been back, if there's anything else you'd like the staff to do with this.
Yes. Norm to Dave. Um, we're missing a set of the next culvert crossing drawings for our design. So I would, and I think Mike said that he was gonna get those and also get a stamped set. Of of these culvert sets to Dave, so that would be to me an action item that needs to be fulfilled.
I understand that to be a follow up that the applicant is aware of. I wonder if there's any new requests to get information from the applicant.
Let me.
Norm, I don't, this is Tim, I don't think so until we get Hannigan's responses, right?
Right, yeah, my my only. My only thing, and I talked with Joe just an hour or more. Uh, they these. Uh, areas where the the cover over the sewer water, purification, sewer water and all that sort of thing. Uh, he sort of indicated that it's not, you know, things that are in in pretty good shape that way. Uh, but I'm just thinking this isn't really from the developer, but I would just like to see something in writing from Joe Buckley. That he is agreeing with whatever these modifications are.
Important.
I'll find me, I'll get it, I'll get that, I'm wondering if if Carl approves them. Does, you still, cuz Carl's, cuz Joe's gonna say, what does Carl say?
And then Carl's gonna say that's construction.
No, no, sorry, I'll talk about them, despite covering.
The solar.
Yeah, revisions.
I I if we got something more, if we got something from Director Buckley saying, I've reviewed Joe's comments and I agree, isn't that good enough where we've covered ourselves?
You know, I I'll buy that, and you know, I I'd even buy if we can get. Carl to include a note in his report that there's an agreement. Between he and Joe Buckley, that the provisions are okay.
I'm fine with that too.
No, okay. Excellent, maybe that's a call you need.
I mean, I apologize.
Okay, yeah.
Just to be clear, so what do you, for Carl Holtren indicate that he discusses the revision source and water. Not structural, not structural, that Joe Buckley agrees with the jig that they made?
Yeah.
Anything else on Britton? Okay, then back to our regularly scheduled program. Next up, we have a public hearing for a application for a special permit for retail marijuana establishment on Main Street. By Bullitt Properties. And just for clarification, first question is, who is Bullitt Property?
Just a company, one of our companies.
To see if we ever affiliate.
It's it is, yeah. And the president and treasurer, just like the other.
So.
They just do the controversial.
Here he is.
Yeah, right.
Now it's paved.
The board has endorsed this yet.
Thank you. Figured one of these guys would have coughed it up fifty, but you know what?
Yes, thank you, that was awesome. Thanks.
So who wants to explain your application?
So what we're looking for is, just basically from the board's side, first of all, just to clarify. I have nothing to do with the marijuana establishment except for owning the building, they're renting the building from me. Um, other than that. It's it's Chris Higgins, that's this. Fight for all permits with Cannabis Commission and all that other stuff, so as far as I'm concerned, I'm just the builder. Um, and the owner of the building. Um, basically, it's just a seventeen hundred square foot building, it's a. Probably is a lot, isn't it? Yeah, so it's like an acre and point six six acres, I was there. And. We're we're checking it out, I guess, you know, we went through the the meeting with the, some of the different departments here, and they they came up with some different things. Joe Buckley wanted to see a a profile of the sewer line, and he also wanted us to add a manhole in the sewer line. Seth wanted to make sure that we, you know, put a fence along the back so that there wasn't access. Through that area for my big trucks and equipment where we park it there, he wanted to make that, keep that space separated, separated.
I object to that.
I'm sorry?
I object to that. No, honestly, there should be an emergency way to get through there quickly, dude, you know.
They've got two entrances to this facility.
But they have a fence in the back.
Yeah, and if you if you take that fence away, that's gonna be the cut through for everybody and their brother.
Cut, yeah, how they.
You go right now.
Question, what's your, what's the intent of flow of the traffic, right, probably Main Street and then later exit out.
Yeah, they go right around the building and come up the other side.
They'll go on their quarter then.
No, no, traffic's right around the back of the building, see the arrows, it comes in.
At the street, two Main Street entrances.
Yeah, yeah.
And then out on Main Street.
And out on Main Street.
What?
So there will be no access from there, you know.
There's zero access to the Martin Construction, am I correct?
Martelli, yeah.
Or Nelly?
You're correct, Martelli.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, all of that's pretty straightforward, it's just a building, you know, it's it's in the PC two district, did I get that correct, PC two? It's got a ridiculous infiltration system on it, which is useless, but it's there, there's sewer water control. Needs sewer water management, as far as we're concerned, we need sewer water management completely.
In the wetlands, there's a wetland off to the right. Way out to the right, at the bottom of the slope, it's a, it's a pretty big slope there.
So.
We're gonna have to buy with.
we're gonna have to buy with We need clarifying.
Are you guys clearly, the the one thing I read in the traffic report was this exceeds the accident rate on Main Street. So they their suggestion was minimal vegetation around this facility.
Only cut down those ivy leaves and drone all those years.
I'm not telling you what to do. I'm just
I don't want to look at the place. What is that?
Just reading the report and the conclusions that Green International Affiliates did. So I will leave it up to the board on what they want to do, but that traffic study says that based on the study that this facility exceeds the accident rate in this district.
I don't understand that at all.
With the amount of traffic that'll be going in and out of that facility. Again, I'm just reading the, I'm reading the report on page one of the traffic study.
Can't even come close to the amount of traffic that goes in across the street.
Well, I wondered, I mean, when I looked at it, just
I didn't know.
I listened to the traffic report, but how many accidents have been in that? And that's what I was looking at. One time it was like zero. Am I wrong, Tim?
Yeah, no, it just, it says the unsigned intersection of Main Street and Maple was a crash rate blah blah. Replacing pavement markers, intersections, reducing speed. I mean, it gives a bunch of examples. And I I just, I'm bringing it up. I'm not saying it do anything. I'm just, I'm up to the board with these recommendations because this is the first time I've ever seen a traffic study in Rutland actually recommend doing anything. So that's the only reason when I read it, I thought I'd bring it before the board.
Is there supposed to be a fence or something like that all around this thing, a jammed fence or some sort for protection?
There's a stockade fence in the back.
Just a stockade area.
In the back, not in the sides, but in the back.
Because it's a building. It's not a growth facility. It's just a building.
Yeah.
So they don't armor them like the growth facilities.
No, but they store.
Right, but they're all locked in and they got cameras. It's it's quite a security system.
The reason why it's there is because the police chief wanted that they are not down Route sixty eight, so hold them and get better access to it.
And that and I guess to the board, and I don't know if this is our purview, this is where I'm gonna ask the board, is that I noticed when I read the application that it said no requirement for generator. I'm struggling with that, with having a high security system. T fob doors, a lot of electronics, and no generator backup system for this facility, considering that has a safe. It has cameras. I'm struggling with that one.
Part of the language, that's a whole thing about. Give me a break. That should be first thing on a dark on was especially the way things have been popping around here in Rutland lately.
And I don't know, I don't know if that's the building inspector's purview or ours. That's why I'm asking the board and or David or anybody. Because on the on the application, it says no for generator and whatever else. So so on the on this application that we got for the lessor's responsibility.
Lime systems aren't controlled with the generator. They control the battery backup.
Battery backup.
All all lime systems have battery backups in all offices. That's what that's about. I mean, that's why.
Still, for me, for a lot of those day and age, I'd be very scared for
Hey, I want to put a generator. I mean, you know. But that's that's up to Chris. He's he's doing the outside.
So is, all right, well, and again, yes, I'm asking, David, is this the is this the building inspector? Or is this a site plan since it's on the on our application? Is that our purview?
So you're referring to the, there's a mark of a lease agreement? Yeah, I mean, you're seeing. Can you just show me where you see generator? I want to get to that page before I come into further.
It it says like, it it it's right after where the agreement for Hi-Hawk and Mr. Blair signed on it. There's a page right after that's got lessor responsibilities, less C responsibility, lease terms and such like that. And like one of the lessor terms is no two hundred amp service, generator disconnect a panel, no HVAC sized handler connector.
I can answer that.
No, it's
Tim, just to interrupt for a second. That's the agreement between Chris and I. In other words, I'm not doing any of that work that's shown on the plan. He's doing the work. Alls I'm doing is giving him a shelf and a parking lot. Anything that has to do with the outside is is me. Anything that has to do with the inside wiring, the HVAC and all that stuff, he's supplying. So you're, if you're reading that from our agreement, that's because that's what we agreed on. It's not, it doesn't have anything to do with with what's gonna be there at the end of it. I I don't know what what he's gonna provide, but
Thanks, Clea. I appreciate that. Be, I guess, my kickback to the board. Do we get into that kind of detail as part of, Dave came up with a bunch of questions and answers.
Oh, I think I had it on this. So first off, the reference to the generator is in a lease agreement between the parts, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, fine. So beyond that, there's no requirement in the site plan regulations that requires a generator for this type of facility. I think this is the choice of the operators, whether they would like to pursue that direction or not. I would frankly think that that's beyond the board's purview because that's strictly speaking, not a site element, a site plan element under discussion permit that the board ordinarily have jurisdiction on. When the board would have jurisdiction, for example, if there was a generator, if there were a generator, the board could make sure it required a generator, the shield review was buffering. That would be the board's purview, not to require a generator outside of that context.
Okay, I just thought with a special permit, we have a all right, a little bit more purview. So I guess what I'm getting at is is this a question for, because it's security involved, and I understand there's battery backups, but there's not battery backups for cameras. I know that for a fact. Is this something that we should ask the police chief? Is this something that from a security and safety standpoint, he's got an opinion on?
Is that part of the site plan review?
Well, I would say everything with a special permit is on the table for this building because it's a marijuana facility. It has security. It has safes. It has cameras. It has floodlights. It has all kinds of stuff. It's not specific to a typical building in Rutland.
And if you notice, I noticed down in the less C's responsibilities for last time with the generator.
Yeah. I I just
I mean, it's listed right on there. And I own this building. I put a generator in there. I'm not gonna do all this. Gotta believe it's on the top of the list anyway, so.
Yeah, I just, I it's one of those things where with this building, I think that the board should really dot the i across these and ask all the questions potentially necessary for this building.
My question, I would agree with that, but my question is, is that an appropriate question for tonight?
Are there any guides from the state with about battery backup? Because if we have events similar to the ice storm ten years ago, you need power for fuel. After it may not support it.
Excuse me, will you please identify yourself?
I'm just wondering if you could just, if Mr. Blake could just talk to his generator issue because we're seeing it going around on this one. Does the generator require the lease or not?
I I'm not providing, but he's probably providing.
Responsibilities, check, check, check. And then there were a couple no, no's. So I think that was his concern. If they're not here, and there's these responsibilities, generator, left bomb, material.
Right, he's gonna do, yeah, he's definitely putting the generator, according to this.
No, and 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 Clea, I'm not, I'm not picking on you. I'm, what I'm trying to say is, for to do a complete site plan review. Personally, I want all the, I want all the information. I don't, parts and pieces. And it seems like based on what I'm seeing, at least from the documents I got, I got parts and pieces. I don't have the complete package.
Pretty complete package, yes.
What happened to our sidewalk?
That's to be discussed.
Because I think somebody's coming to Clea in in two weeks for that building in the back. They're gonna put a gym in there, so they want, you know, access for it from the road.
Where's this?
Was there a site plan scheduled? No.
Let me, let me ask a better question, Norm. The the document that Dave prepared, which I really liked this, that he sent to us this afternoon. Does that make sense to get that to the applicant and have some of those questions answered for the next hearing? Because I think this needs to be continued. That's my personal
That, you know, that that's a definite.
So a lot of these questions I'm asking, why don't I just shut up and say, hey, answer Dave's, uh, answer Dave's comments and we can get this all taken care of in the next meeting.
And Dave, we thought of meeting, so I was, I heard it firsthand.
In addition, we also had an, thank you for that. There was an entry department that we reviewed before this. I mean, yeah, both applicants are part of that meeting. We both have this information here, so we're trying to just, you know, keep the information flowing.
So you, I want to respond. I got this today, but, you know, some of the stuff I was just wanting to already that Joe Buckley asked for. Some of the stuff is just simple.
Some of the stuff would be in the purview of Higgins, because he was specifically, they're part of this process.
Dave, I I see you did a a great job of getting Peter Crane and Nick Monaco to send emails, but I don't see anything from Chief Knight because I I was curious about sprinklers and all that kinds of stuff. Because when I looked at the plans, again, I'm not an NFPA building guy, so I don't know what the minimum and maximum size for sprinkler requirements in commercial buildings are.
The only problem is that the chief had had to do with making the site unto itself. He indicated that all these other things that you're asking about are part of the building code, fire codes, that will be looked at at the building permit process. Which is the distinct process outside of the site plan review.
Okay, all right. I just, again, what I was looking for was like a letter from Chief Monaco said, I've reviewed Hi-Hawk's LLC plans and find their security plans, traffic and parking are all acceptable, and I have no questions or concerns. Interesting.
Thank you, Chair, once again. So these various department has have very busy schedules. We try to do the outreach, but we're trying to be annoying with the requests for documentation and writing. Given that this is most likely to be continued, we will do further follow up to get these various board permissions of the partners to commit to what we just recited, a lot of your writing. But I just indicated to you what the chief's perspective was as to this is rare. If you like that writing, we'll try to be persistent, but not overly annoying.
I I just have, you know, one one particular question there. Bullitt Properties is submitting the application. But you're not gonna be running the actual marijuana establishment.
Well, we're applying for site plan review.
But don't we need an application for the actual operation of the marijuana facility?
Everything that was supposed to be filled out is filled out. Maybe I should come off off of that, but you have licenses, you have copies of everything. I'm kind of wondering.
I think what I would recommend, so we have an application, Bullitt Properties is listed as the applicant. And we are, is the signatory on the last page. I think the property, this is actually co-application, one owner, two applicants. The company that says Higgins is a co-applicant for purposes of writing it. Then if it dissolves, it falls back to the retail store under the ownership. So I think we do have other sections on this last page for applicants, law owners. The company that said Higgins were just sending a bunch of pages in the last page.
Is he, is he on?
Because isn't, a- a- am I not reading this wrong? Under our special permit process, we have section A, which is application. And then it has a whole bunch of requirements under that. And one of them is commission and license application. Owner operators list, right to use.
We gave you all that, Tim.
Is that, is that in that package that I got?
Yes, sir. I gotta say, Julian was pretty good, you know.
For a big package, it wasn't as much as I thought, you know, a lot of that was, but, you know, they were all listed. I you know, the day to day operations of the establishment, any year from now, they're gonna have nothing to do with you and almost everything to do with the Higgins. Is that what you're saying? So what? Then you have not one of those day to day operations, something like this, and he's prelisted.
Collect rent.
Well, let's put it this way, you know, Bullitt Properties has not positioned the Cannabis Control Commission.
No. Nope, I'm just gonna own the building.
First time for us, all right.
So it makes sense to get Higgins.
I don't think it does make sense. I I think it's imperative.
Well, I mean.
I think so, yeah, I think it'd be nice to know that everybody around here came in, they came in, there was three. Family, right? Father, son, daughter, maybe something.
I have no idea.
That's the best I can understand it right now. We are, we are, as we're giving a site plan approval to build a building in the TC two district. We are also giving approval to operate a marijuana retail store.
Yeah.
Just for the refined, the answer, if you don't mind. What's the form of the plan where it's a special permit for a retail marijuana establishment, which is permitted line item in the article twelve marijuana uses. As part of the special permit process is the site plan. Site plan is absorbed into the special permit process. So it's it's authorizing the use and the site plan. It's authorized, what you see here for building, traffic circulation, parking and use. So both things can be accomplished through this approval.
Are you saying that the actual running of the business and the actual containment of the building is our responsibility, the contents?
As, yes, because that's a, so the board is approving the use, which is a marijuana retail establishment. That's allowable by special permit. Now, as part of the special permit process, you can cite that review that goes with it.
Tonight, we're more or less doing a site plan review, aren't we?
If you like, and ultimately, we're asking all the things. You do have the application, you have signs of fact of the special permit. The appi- application submitted, materials provided, some finds a fact under the article twelve marijuana. It's also finds a fact of the general special permit signs that are and then there are special permit signs that come out of TC two itself. So there's really four from three of the So there's really four from three of the parts of the bylaws, and so they have to request that's here before the work. And if the board continues this, then you would, you know, take what you learned tonight and dig up at the next time, but we're doing many things at once.
So who will decide when you goes in conjunction with the approval of the whole business and what?
Actually, the final vote would be a motion to approve a special permit for retail marijuana, subject to the plan and other information submitted. One of the items that is submitted is this plan that you see here. This plan itself, which shows the site plan, which is the physical organization of the site, how it practically gets around the site, how the site plan function. Is, so is the parking space, other parking space functional? For example, so that's.
So that doesn't, we're not, uh, are we gonna actually approve a site plan?
You will, but it wouldn't be a separate vote, because once again, um, we get, get away with the violence.
Okay, I mean, that's the, that's.
I have a whole process.
So they're not holding on to the?
No.
No, they're not holding on.
Grant the special permit.
So I guess, I, I, I'm confused. Are we, are we approving?
What was that question, Tim?
We approving eighty-six point eight, point one special permit? Or is there something else I don't know about that we're approving? Cause I thought the site plan was all part of that eighty-six point eight, point one special permit, it was all wrapped up into one complete piece.
Well, they just, that was my question, and they said that, that, you know, that that's the way it works.
So just, just to further look for the, the point here. So the zoning bylaw, second eighty-six, special permit process is ahead. So that takes me through eighty-six A. That takes you across to eighty-six B. Which is headed, site plan approval. The SBGA, the planning board, shall review of the full site plan in accordance with provisions of the applicable sections of the zoning bylaw. So really what that's saying, a site plan is part of the special permit process, it's not a separate vote.
No, I, I understand that, I'm happy with that.
I'm sorry. How does that answer the question in terms of what the board will be approving?
Right, thank you.
My, you know, my, my guess would be, you know, this document that you came up with is going to have items regarding site plan, but also regarding the marijuana bylaw.
That's correct.
So, yes. Combination, you know, every, everything's gonna be happening. Single thing.
So, Norm, all, all of these sections from A to M is under our review for this special permit, correct?
I would say so, yes.
Okay, that's, that's what, that's what I thought, and site plan is number M, which is part of it, and I agree. I'm just, I'm struggling with this, this application that I'm looking at, that, uh, I, I don't think it follows what we was asking for in the special permit. I mean, I, I'm okay with, what is this, the special app, the application, I'm okay with that. Provisional license attaches a notice of provisional license. I was curious of where that. Oh, there it is, got it, thank you, November eighteenth. And then commission license. So does the town have that? I guess, Dave, I'm asking.
I guess what I would be saying, I, I would, I would press it, is that the, the other co-applicant out of here answered the specific question that the danger of marijuana operation. I will say that in the book binder, there are finds of fact for eighty-six A to M. But then there are additional finds of fact in eighty-seven that have not been provided, so.
Okay, all right, I'm good, I just, I'm just, I, I, I'm more of a step-through and, uh, make sure I got everything, so owner's, operator's list, the right to use, which is that LOI, that binding letter. I guess that's a just, that's the, uh, the, uh, agreement between Mr. Blair and Hi-Hawk Farms LLC.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure that, I was not expecting to have all those, uh, all that paperwork here tonight. But when you go back to the site plan, my, uh, concern is, what I would like is that I'm not too happy with the egress, that we only have traffic coming, you know, in and out. And then if there's an emergency, you have fire trucks coming in the front, front lawn, trying to get out there. And I would like to see some kind of an emergency exit in that fence and, uh.
Nope. I'm gonna disagree.
Chris, Chris, just call. Oh, Chris is clear. Are, are, are you involved with the zoning business? Oh, yeah, did you have the link, did you get the link today?
It's on the agenda.
It's on the town's website.
You can access it anywhere.
It's on the agenda, can you, can you just get it from the agenda? Just curious questions for you. I'm sure there's questions for you, and there always is. And then, yeah, uh, meetings tonight, so if you could, you know how to look up the agenda, town, Ottawa? And then, and then just, okay, perfect, thank you. Sorry, man, I just wanted to, what were you saying on what egress?
Um, I'm, uh, actually, my question is about emergencies, so if you had, uh, say a fire fire trucks trying to get into the property and got caught, you know, wreck, uh, people trying to get out of the property, should there be an emergency exit in that fence and that? And that's a question that would be.
I'm happy to provide one, if that's. Okay. Just put up a gate that, a gate for an emergency, but just run it over. Not one that goes all the time, plus it's there, you can throw, but don't use it as a.
It's a first-hand, right? I didn't.
Have to lock gate.
Right, no, I mean, I mean. You know, we have to do something, uh, simple.
Still say should have some way of, you know. Go straight back. Because in five years, ten years, who the hell knows? Yeah, it's fine, we could put a gate back there. It would satisfy both your issues. Right, right in the corner where the, the last parking spot is. And the driveway goes.
Why don't we, why don't we ask the fire chief, because he's the one that was adamant about the fence.
That's correct.
But if you go.
I think we should ask the fire chief.
But they have the cars practicing from here to here. You get right up to where your tons of oil now. I have a gate here, so it's not a pool.
The gate would solve everything.
That would be a good safety, because you don't want people going through there, right?
No, I mean.
People are so used to probably driving into that building from Main Street, they're gonna keep trying to do it, so go enter from eight o'clock. Oh, it's changed. What happened to, I have ten years now, that building has changed into something different.
Then what will come down?
Come back.
Yeah. But you can't, because you've got wetlands there, you can't get by it. There is no room there, is there a room on the other side to make access?
Well, we have two com, two sides, access for, you know.
Exactly, Julian, you got double access. You have a double barrel or doubles entrance on both sides. That's like twice the width of a fire truck.
Right. And the other side of the dumpster is, that's the back part of the parking lot of my belly. So, the driveway goes around.
Alright, so in the, in the future, if you had to, you could close off the marijuana and open it up directly for Main Street to the back, to the building.
And you have to be done at a, at a further length.
And, and remember, look at that, that whole front right side, that, even though it looks like it's busy, that's all, that's all asphalt there. That whole area east of, uh, where it says exterior lights, is all asphalt. So it's just parking spaces asphalt. So that's clear, you can get multiple vi, emergency vehicles in there. Um, and still have room to get cars and other people aside, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, perhaps you could ask the fire chief.
Yep, fine, I'm good with that.
So Chris Higgins is on there now, guys. Okay, particular question for Mr. Higgins.
Hi, how are you? Sorry about this, I didn't, I'm not sure how I missed this one, but.
First of all, before I forget, Chris, you have to sign the application and get added to the application. Right now, it's just in my name.
Okay.
All right, so you gotta remember to do that right away.
Okay.
I do wanna have a sidewalk, but, um, the only question that had come up early was the generator, Chris, are you gonna be taking care of a generator for this facility with the amount of security cameras and, um?
Um, Kevin, I think, I think that can be handled if we had a better detail on H under energy use plan. Cause right now, I, I read that, and it's just like everything is up in the air. And I don't think that was what our intent was when we wrote the energy use plan, it was actually showing, um, uh, practices, and then planning includes overview, proposed energy demands. Expectations is some drawings. Uh, proposed water system utility demands. Um, this H just basically says, yeah, 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 we'll do it, we'll do it, we'll do it. I don't think that was the intent under H, it was actually to show us how, what you were using, how it was gonna be hooked up, uh, what was gonna be used. Sort of, uh, a detail of that. And I don't see that under energy use plan. And I think that generator would fall under that if it was, if it was gonna be used under H. I could be wrong.
What are ramp service of the automatic transfer switch?
Is it, oh, I, is that all it needs, is two hundred amps?
Yeah.
Yep, you can do that. We do that at our resource facilities for our gas, uh, gate stations. We have generators with automatic.
Sorry, sir, perhaps the comment should be turned to a question from Mr. Higgins. That would be, what do you understand to be an energy use plan as listed in the zoning bylaw under eighty-six H, energy use plan?
Yeah, it said, the plan shall include an electrical system overview. I don't see that. Am I missing something?
I mean, it's a pretty straightforward, you know, we're gonna use energy efficient LED lights. Yes, there is gonna be a generator for backup there. Um, we've got a security system in place, but you know, overall, it's gonna be a pretty, you know, as energy efficient as we can build a.
Yeah, but when, from an electrical engineer's standpoint, when it says electrical system overview, expectations is you're seeing how, you know, you've got a two hundred amp service, it's feeding, uh, blah, 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 so the designs are done. And, and you've done that with, with your layout of all of the rooms, but there's no electrical plan. And then there's no, um, what's the other one in there? Um, ventilation and air quality, any of that, so I don't, I, I, I don't see a complete set of plans here, is what I guess I'm getting at. Based on our H.
You know, electrical plan, we go to the building.
That's what I was just, yeah.
You know, nobody, nobody starts building anything without a plan. I, I'm, I'm done with that in Rutland. Either have a plan or don't build it, that's how that works out. You don't, you don't start a building without having the designed electrical. I'm sorry, it doesn't work that way. Because how do you know how much the vol can use, how much, how do you know the lights? All that stuff has to be designed out. Because an electrician is not just gonna install lights uh, willy-nilly. He's gonna need to know what his, his wiring's gonna be, all that. All that has to be done up front.
Are you saying that the planning board has to have that, or can we get, and for, can we get information, get a release or not a release for a report from the building inspector that he approves it? Or the, whoever's department it is?
There's codes in place, that's.
Yeah.
Want it done up front.
It's not out of our jurisdiction.
Yeah.
It's not of our jurisdiction. Right there in H, it says electrical overview. Right there, it says water and air quality. If, if that's out of our jurisdiction, then take it out of the special permit, don't put it there. That's how I view it.
Let me ask you, what kind of comment would you have if it meets code? This is just neat code. I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not trying to be a wise guy, but.
Yeah, but I don't see.
I never brought an electric plant to a site plan interview before.
Yeah, well, you've never, nobody in this town's ever done a building like this before either. How many commercial buildings have we done in Rutland in the last five or six years? About zero.
I don't know, but.
I kinda, I kinda, we kinda looked at it as like if there was a cultivation facility coming into town or an indoor grow, that's gonna use a tremendous amount of electricity. Then sure, I would, I would, I would agree with all this, but this is gonna be like a single-family home. There's not much energy consumption in a seventeen hundred square foot building with some lights and a refrigerator.
Cameras.
Electrical overview to me.
I've, I've made my concerns known, whatever the wants to do is up to the board, I, I'm, that's fine. I made my concern.
Overall, you, it's a general description. I, 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 I think, I think Chris hit on what it is. I'm about to rent to a grow facility. And those things eat juice. So that's probably what that, because this is, this encompasses grow, it encompasses, um, you know, manufacturing, it encompasses, uh, dispensaries, the, the, the bylaws, it covers all three of those things. So I think some of them apply to one and maybe doesn't apply to the other, but, you know, it, it's basically just a retail store, I mean, if you're, you know, if you were putting a honey farms there, it would be, you know, would you need an electrical overview, or it would just be, it would be something that, you know, the building inspector would take care of, but if you're putting a grow facility that eats up tons of juice, I mean, I, I, you know, they've been, they've been, these, these people in the grow facility have been dealing with national grid now for, I don't know how long, to get the right amount of juice to that building, so that they can grow weed in there. But, um, I don't think he's gonna need that, and this, so it might not apply to this, is all I'm saying.
Well, I guess I gotta ask, then why, why on one of the revisions does it say electrical plants? Am I missing something? I'm looking right here.
Site plan, I'd say.
A one point three.
Lights and alcohol lights, that's your electrical plan, yeah.
Well, where's that drawing? I, I don't see.
If it's not there. I submitted the drawings that Chris and you gave me, I, I don't maybe, maybe you need to add.
I, is there something I missed?
Are you saying that this is different than the, uh, car wash? For example?
Yeah, because the site plan or the special permit's different.
Do we need more information on, on this facility?
Yeah, I, I, I believe it is, because we have a specific bylaw for marijuana facilities. And for, uh, car wash, all we have is a site plan, which is basically site plan review. With this marijuana facility, we have, um, a special permit that encompasses A through M, or maybe it's even farther than that, I apologize. I'm have, I don't have my A through, yeah, M. And then site plan approval, so it's a little bit more encompassing than a standard site plan review. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but that's not, you know, I just, like I said, I'm, I'm looking at these drawings and that's what I was asked to do, and I'm curious if it doesn't seem like a complete package.
Is there even a design for the inside of the store, I don't think anybody expected to to submit that for this type of, so I mean, I could be wrong, but I mean, you'd have to finish designing the entire inside of the building.
Let me ask Chris a question. Have you built any other one of these than any other towns and bastions?
I haven't personally, no.
Okay.
We, we built an outdoor, we have, we currently. We, we built an outdoor, we have, we currently own an outdoor cultivation in Barry. So this would be our first dispensary.
Alright.
I know you can get a permit for a house without an electrical plan.
Yeah.
A permit can be called for that without. The all of those fine details.
It's a retail store.
Yeah. That's what an actual plan would be is where we're ready to tell the goals, which is we don't need all that.
Tim, is what you're trying to get at is that we need a detailed plan that shows where every single light, every single outlet, every single switch in the entire building must be shown.
No, 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 Norm. What I was asking for is, is, is typically what I've seen, again, I'm being in electrical and working with electricians like. Lester is, is typically have like a one line drawing showing the 200 amp service that goes out to the building, has a hook generator in it. Basically says, you know, this goes out to the lights. It doesn't go out to every.
How do I say this?
It, it's a panel drawing. I mean, God, we've, it, it shows 200 amp panels. This is all the. I mean, because I gotta tell you, Chris Senical is not going to build this building without an electrical layout. Because electricians do not design buildings. They work off drawings. Then an electrical engineer designs. So that's why I'm struggling with, yeah, it's just going to be built to code. Well, unfortunately, there's that step in between an electrician installing it and how it's designed. And without a design, how do we know what's going in? I'm not looking for the detail of how the circuits go in, how the wire is done. I mean, that all should be there as part of, as part of a cable and conduit schedule. That's typical with any design. Cause I gotta tell you, in my world now. I have to have a cable and conduit schedule and an electrical wiring to send out to bids for anybody to, to able to review it, bless it, and then bid on it. And right now, this package that we have, how's anybody, I mean, I get it. You guys did a great job on, on the building, the foundations. How it's laid out, the parking lots. But again, we have a requirement in here called H. It's energy. So, you know, anyhow, I'm just, if everybody's fine with it, I'm fine with it. I really.
Well, let me ask you, you want me to just show where the service? Normally we put the, the meter off to the side. So it's not in the front of the building, but we put it in the back. So in a conduit, we, we, we just come underground from the, from the closest telephone pole where we're.
Yeah, and, and see, Clay, what I'm getting at is, and, and I'm not trying to compare these, please don't tell you that, but we had a, a car wash. That had all conduit laid out, how the electrical was coming in, what pole it was coming off of. You know, we didn't have the details of, you know, the exact box, but it was a 200 amp service. That was all going to be designed. This, um, to me is a, is a huge step above a car wash. Because it's got cameras, it's got security, it's got floodlights, it's going to have other security lights, it's going to have fobs. It's going to have computers, it's going to have IP and, and ethernet access. There's a whole lot of stuff here that is all going to be included in this building that's not one iota of information about. And, and then that's fine. If the board doesn't want it, I'm okay. I'm just, again, I'm bringing this stuff up because this is our first go around. With our first quote marijuana and commercial building in Rutland in a long time.
I can't see need for anything more than maybe a simple diagram showing the electrical entrance. You know, meter. Panel. End of story.
That's a, somebody else, that's somebody else's after that. Yeah, barrier beyond that.
Utility pole on the left of National Grid says, no, they're going over here. I wanted it to come from here. Nope, it's coming from there. I'm going to be. The amount of power used at the car wash is probably going to be more than the amount of power used in this facility, I would say.
Yeah.
Overall juice, right? More power actually, but I mean, as far as the technical aspect of it, I'm not.
Is there any way to?
Low wattage stuff.
Extend the side, the sidewalk they have in the building comes out by the front there, proposed walkway, then scoots over towards the back. After seeing the lineup in Gardner. If you're ever going to have that in Rutland, you know, you're not going to have a whole sidewalk.
A lot of that is really calmed down now.
Yeah, because of the six foot.
Plus that's coming back next year. Oh, yeah. I think they're going to up at the 12 feet.
Oh, great.
Be clear, they fucking, and, and maybe this is Chris. Are, are they going to come off a pole and put a transformer somewhere and then run that into the building? I mean.
Tell if they need a transformer for this. Just a standard hookup, Chris. Not a, it's not going to take that much juice.
Alright.
Transformer means you gotta, they're pushing a lot of power.
Alright, if it's a 200 amp service, you get it. I'm just, alright, good enough. Just, let's move on.
Okay.
Move on.
But I'll show it on the plan anyway. So right now, we're looking at a gate in the back so that we can have emergency access. And we want an electrical plan showing where the service is going to be underground and where it's going to come into the building. So far, that's what I've got for notes.
What have we got on the other side of the street? I know there's.
Some cab.
Right, so is there curving there? I guess that would be, you know, say how you cut your two in and outs. On the northern side, is there, I don't even know if this is an issue, but there's potential for somebody coming out of Honey Farms since cab.
No, this, they're offset.
They're offset and I saw that there'll be. You know what I'm saying? This is a wide, you know, this is a big wide open to get into, I don't know, whatever, yeah. Maybe down the road that gets narrowed. So there's not as many options to pull out on the main street from.
Yeah, usually, I have to go closer to where you have the gravel and the, fairly close to that.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying? From the plaza side, I, I don't be able to talk about that having a more narrow opening. So that there's not, you know, I say, it doesn't happen, but they're also, you could also have four cars trying to come out. Coming the other way.
Have four thousand hours.
No, you're gonna have a lot of.
They have to enter, like, have like three more defined natural exits.
I thought about that because it would add a lot of parking.
It's like a brick cars on that way too.
Yeah.
It's just, just a thought. I mean, it could be something down the road that comes up. I don't think for this purpose, I don't have any issue with it. I was just curious.
I think, well, one of the things that. Could influence that your business is that there, I believe it's 15 stores open now in, in Worcester. So the market has changed dramatically in terms of how many people can become, you know, how many customers are going to be coming to the store too.
Yeah, in fact, I think, you know, Holden doesn't allow it, so I think we're going to draw from there. You know, Chris will. I think they'll draw from Baxton. I don't think they allow it, do they?
I don't think so.
Right, and then.
Or they don't have any.
So they'll, they'll do a pretty good draw. Okay, I don't know if they, any of those they have, they have any.
No, I think it's going to, it has a, definitely has a more than. Market, but not. You know, not so much that the stores had in Worcester when they first opened and there was a, a new thing on the block.
Right, I don't foresee, I don't foresee this to probably have a traffic wise, personally.
Okay, there's still, you know, still definitely questions to be answered, particularly from this document that Dave has come up with. We want to take, maybe move onward and talk about a sidewalk.
Is the public, I don't know, she's up back there, I don't know if she, the public or something like that.
You also have a person online here.
Somebody would like to speak.
I think the suggestion. Public comment before you talk about a site.
Oh. Hello?
Was that directed at me or who was the sidewalk?
Person who wanted to get on earlier, who was speaking before she was called on. I guess it's on you, Magda.
Yep, yep, Magda and her husband.
Yes.
The question that there was about, are there any requirements by the, mastered by the state, whether for the backup power, how long it is supposed to last? Considering that we had the ice storm and we were out of power for three or four days here. So battery alone would not be enough, but.
It was a week.
So.
I have seven days myself, yeah, yeah.
I guess I don't know the, the extent of how many days that it would have to carry, but there will be a battery backup, you know, as the, the quick. Backup and then the generator as well, propane generator. You know, we'd have to figure out how long that's going to last, but I don't know as if the CCC has a requirement on how long that has to be. But I could look into that for you.
Okay, WLP, 100 gallon tank, approximately two to two and a half days depending on the drag. How many volts pulling? Watch, whatever, amps.
The generator wouldn't.
Norm. I had one last question, which was always a pain for us on the planning board. And I, Dave might have brought it up and maybe I missed it, is the signage. I didn't see in this plan that. Anyplace about, you know, typically we. Time looks like.
It was a signage thing in there. There was an illuminated sign.
Yeah, was it in the package and I missed it?
Yeah.
I apologize. One on the street and then one I think he said was going to be against the building.
Alright, but I make a comment in the staff. Comments that signage is not part of this approval process. Signage is a different process, which you need its own permits. You have to come back and deal with that as a separate issue.
Dave, isn't that, isn't that item J? Signage, the applicant shall provide details regarding all perfa, all proposed signage for the facility.
Well, I think they can show the details in the submittal and, and have to come back and get a separate special permit for your signage.
Oh, okay, I apologize.
I don't think it's one of the same process necessarily. I don't really feel like.
Well.
You just put them on notice that they will need a separate permit for the size. I'm not sure that's going to be any issue. It shouldn't be. And that signage is shown on the submittal as a detail, then it's shown as a detail, this requirement.
Alright, I guess so.
Anybody else? And Tim, you had that comment before Chris was on about the traffic impact study. Was that something you wanted to mention to him again?
No, it was Chris. I, I noticed that when I read this traffic impact study, it said, they basically said that this was high. This was above our standard accidents in, in Rutland and it gave some recommendations. Is that something you're going to work out with, with Mr. Blair as he's building the property or how does that, how does that work? Again, I'm not a, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I don't know. I just, I read their executive summary.
Mr. Three only want a roundabout to allow access to it, that's all. 1.3 million.
Wow, I'm gonna, I'm not a traffic engineer either, so I'm like, yeah, what?
Well, um, I guess, who do we, who do we get to make sure we get this correct? Because they made one comment. Roadside vegetation within the right of way should be selectively cleared and trimmed to improve site distance at provoke, at proposed site drives.
I think that's something we should look at on the sidewalk.
And it requires a mass curb cut from S D O T, so they're gonna, they're gonna tell us exactly what they want.
Specifics that they will allow for the entrance. Yeah, and specifics. They want us to take pictures of anything that protrudes into their right of way. They won't come out, take pictures of.
Right.
That's because they don't want to get off their dead butts to come out.
I said, it was just.
Don't give me statit, especially when it comes to brush hog and buggers.
Alright, move on, I'm sorry.
By the way, Bill Scully is, is with Green Affiliates and he's from town. But he could, you know, I'm sure he can, yeah, questions he can answer.
So the next couple of weeks, Norm, when's the, when's going to be the next day?
Last Friday.
Well, the, the only good part is that the sun is setting later and later.
Sixish.
Getting up to around six. Ending three minutes a day. What are you saying, maybe?
There any markers on the site at this point now, now?
The driveway that's going in is pretty close to where the driveway.
So when we go there, we can have.
With a reasonable.
Visual.
Southern.
And you got a bunch of trucks all packed, right where all those packing lots are. He's got. Excavators, giant trucks, so they're 10 times bigger than what will be to the right. And then the rest of it's pretty much packing lot. Pretty much all it is.
I came by there today and looked in because I was the passenger and it was quite muddy, so.
Yeah, it is really muddy in there.
You know, bushes exist, so you'll see that. I'm almost thinking. Not that next meeting, but maybe the meeting after. If it would be daylight enough, we could do it at a regular meeting.
Alright, to a meeting.
So time for.
To get this built, I want this done just as fast as I can, but they can't get a building without a site plan, so.
Right, I mean, I don't know, if it's a way of a month, I mean.
Looking to extend out?
Think we just want to walk. I mean, my, I like what I see so far. I don't have any. Nothing's jumping out at me crazy. I just kind of like to see where this building is going to be in conjunction with the road and just kind of stand there and do a little walk around. I'm sure.
So we can get that all laid out for you. We'll put building corners, but we have to wait, June, this guy's on vacation or something. He's going to be back Thursday. So if he puts that in I G P S, we can, we can.
Show you the four corners.
Show you the four corners of the building. You need to see that. If you're going to go there, you want to see where, where it is in relation to the road and so forth. So, and we could pretty much lay out whatever you want us to lay out, you know.
So four corners of, we'll know the parameters.
We already know, yeah.
So. And the location of the fence, I think we should put a few. Yeah, the fences though.
First and the 15th is a meeting, oh no, excuse me, 8th and the 22nd. He's on. You know, that, that, that doesn't. That doesn't mean we can't make progress on it until we do a sidewalk.
I guess, yeah, when would we be looking, so the, I wouldn't want to have to. I know how these things go. You know, we go to the 22nd and then there's still another two weeks for the approval for our, you know, I mean, or if we plan on making a motion that day. I, I would think maybe a sidewalk would be. I don't know. Is Tim able to be mobile for a bit or?
I kind of don't think so.
We, like, you know. You want to put this, put this back a month for approval? Is that, you know, I'm.
Well, I, I, what I'm, what I'm thinking is that we can still just continue the public hearing to our next meeting.
Okay.
So, you know, it hasn't, in that time, a bunch of this stuff should be. Looked at, resolved.
There's a stormwater report as well that was circulated to consulting engineer.
Yeah, and if it needs another couple of weeks after that, that's fine. I mean, you know, but maybe we can get it all done by then and, and be happy. It's just. You know, just want to make sure that everybody's satisfied.
I guess I have a question for the board. I mean, how, how much do you? I guess I have a question for the board. I mean, how how much do you think a site visit would inform your judgment to make a decision? I mean, if you had the opportunity, if you if you were gonna continue this to the next meeting on the eighth. You did have the opportunity to do a site visit. Would you wanna do the site visit sooner rather than later? If you had the opportunity to do so? Or are you just looking to continue the whole thing out to the twenty second? Without stopping at the eighth?
I think that the the G P S map of the of the site would be very informative. In order for the site walk to be informative, you have to have some markers where you're planning to put things. Cause it's, as you said, it's basically a open gravel muddy parking lot.
I could put, we could show you where the entrance and the exit is with a couple, you know, stakes on the side. The property corners, except for maybe the one in the woods there, and then the house corners would probably give you all you need. And as long as I can get that done by, you know, well, Friday's gonna snow, so say Monday. You know, so and you can even come as you want to go there anytime you want. It doesn't have to be.
Yeah, I don't like the idea of individuals.
No, I'm just.
I'd rather as a group.
Yeah.
Cause every once in a while.
I mean, I I guess I I look at like if there was fifteen agenda items on the site plan, maybe we need to time, but I don't. I don't not hearing that there's an enormous amount of things that we really need to check off on this. Like what's walkthrough? I mean, I'd be happy to do whatever. Doesn't sound like there's a lot really to me.
We'll start our next meeting at six o'clock. Start our next meeting at six o'clock instead of. Rain day, bring an umbrella.
With a rain rain or a snow day.
If you do this thing like in the car.
Absolutely. Just drive in, take a look. I mean, seven five thirty six, it's fine by me.
We should have some daylight at six. Well, you know. Well, I I don't think we need to spend more than fifteen minutes there.
Yes. World.
I make a motion to do the site walk next meeting at quarter six. No, I mean, six o'clock. At six o'clock. At uh the location of the marijuana facility.
You got, you got that, right?
Okay, there was a motion. Any discussion? Uh, roll call, Tim.
Hi.
Marilyn.
Hi.
Dick.
Hi.
Kevin.
Hi.
Long time.
Do we need a motion, Norm, to um? Continue the public hearing until the next meeting?
Yes.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Motion to. Continue the public hearing to.
March, be it a March.
In a March at six thirty or six fifty, I'm sorry.
Well, if you start immediately at six, that's the site visit, come back.
We'll have to adjourn. Or readjourn.
So was there anybody else who had any questions or comments, do you think?
Any other questions from the.
Well, I'm Carol O'Malley. I I worked at marijuana establishment. Um, you're talking about the site plan. Nothing's going to be approved without that C C C inspection in the end as far as. Um, traffic flow and lighting and all of that, so you know, you you start the preliminary. Work on that and and they'll come in and say, well, you better redo it all. It 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 does take a while. It does take a while, but but those, um, they do wanna see a lot of that access. A lot of the access, I know working in the dispensary, lighting was very key. Because with its cameras, if there's dark corners, that has to be illuminated. Um, so everything is clear for for the film. You have to keep um net watchers who monitor our site. So they have to make sure everything is very clear and visible all the time and have a backup plan. In case of that power outage.
And but that's what they take care of.
They will take care of that, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and as for the number, I know you mentioned that fifteen was still was fifteen licenses and they approved three for every one liquor store. Or for every three liquor stores, it was one approved at marijuana establishments. And it's um, I know Princeton did get approved, so Princeton is one that I think is already in the works now.
Yes, just that Chris Higgins, just wanna elaborate on that a little bit. The C C C requires us for our applicant, we've got our provisional license, but. For our final license, we have to submit everything to the C C C. For an architectural review, however, I can't submit an architectural review until there's a building permit. Authorized by the town of Rutland. Yeah. So to C C C, we get a bill, we get a building permit from the town of Rutland. I have to submit it to the C C C. They review our cameras, our lighting, everything the the previous uh person talked about. And if they come back with anything, then I guess we'll have to come back to you with the what the C C C is thinking. But they won't allow me to submit it until I have a building permit.
But no.
For that motion to continue.
Question, discussion.
Then roll call, Kevin.
Hi.
Uh, Dick.
Hi.
Marilyn.
Hi.
Tim.
Hi.
Norm, I. Hearing is continued.
Thank you very much.
Next up. Let's see, next on the agenda is uh Maple Hill Estates subdivision.
I don't wanna go there anymore.
Nothing significant other than uh. Reviewing as built.
That's correct. He's also working on his list, his report. Um, to make a recommendation to the planning board, to make a recommendation to the select board, so he's working on the as built in the report.
Yeah.
I I don't think there's there's a lot of items there. Maple Hill Estates, the applicant has requested reduction of the surety budget to take care, to account for those things that have been done. To reduce that surety budget. Um, and it sounds to me like the conservation restriction could now be furthered after this plan is filed. I guess. Cause that was an outstanding issue. Great.
Was it, uh, Concom had still had had to wait for uh the okay. Boston. Was there anything else that Concom had to wait for?
Well, all of our changes that we submitted. Are not in their legislative revision at all. We are waiting for explanation at the very least.
Oh, oh, okay. So it's gonna be a while.
Yeah.
It'll be until they respond.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, anything else on Maple Hill?
No. Uh, Bryce Lemon. That's again, uh, I believe. They have Quinn Engineering has. As built for page two, I believe they're reviewing.
Yes, you you are correct. I believe that you are referring to the correspondence of February fourteenth. This is from Quinn. It's Bryce Lemon in the state subdivision phase two. It's a partial as built. It's a review of the partial as built.
Yeah.
So once again, uh, Quinn has the as built and they are working on a report for the board. It has the items that are still outstanding, so the progress is moving forward. I think once the snow melts, according to um Carl Holkberg. We'd like to schedule a site visit with the planning board, D P W and the applicant. They go over it to further refine, you know, a list of things that are outstanding.
Yeah, because on the first page here, number four, I'd like to know where that is. And I believe it was um. I wanted to take a look be and and number six, the center line of the road is deviated from the center to. The right of way on Woodside Ave. I wanted to see what the heck that's all about. Oh, yeah, no, wow, variable width greater than fifty foot and woodside approximately station. So and so for what? It'd be nice to have that walk period.
Yeah.
That's gonna be a little loud. And also like to uh next time to talk to Carl. Tell him to pat himself on the back. He's doing a good job.
He also on Bryce Lemon.
It should be seven, Karen.
Okay, Britton will states uh. I think we pretty well discussed that already earlier.
Yeah.
Bear Hill two and the stadium. So next item, remove from chapter sixty one status. And this is.
All right. How do how do we take take back an A N R you guys signed?
Yeah, cause it's it's quite illegal.
What makes it illegal?
Well.
Before you get in the conversation, you may wanna tell the public what the agenda item is, in particular, what property is under discussion. I put that out to the board so you can just try to work. You know, let the folks know what you're talking about. I'm not sure anybody would know.
Okay, it's removal of parcel land from chapter sixty one status located at forty two Ridge Road. On uh partly trending on Ridge Road and partly on Watson Road. And. Yes, this is the absolutely recently approved in the.
Yes.
Go ahead, Tim.
Sixty one A as definition by mass general law. Has to have at least five acres of property. So moving these individual lots into less than five acres, not all of them, but most of them. To without the sixty one A property being converted or uh turned over. I believe was uh an illegal. Uh, I just say it was, it it's not, it's not correct for mass general law. Again, I'm not an attorney. This is a peak, this is a K P law question. But I don't think any of these, and again, I don't know what what how this gets fixed or whatever happens. But from my perspective, at least from what I've read. In mass general law, under sixty one A properties, you have to have at least five acres of property to be given a sixty one A. And this hasn't been officially taken out yet, so converting it to A and R, it's not being taken out. I don't understand how it can be done.
Kevin, right, yeah, and I I I same question, Tim, how, this is a process question for me. How did the A and R come to us before the sixty one A removal came?
It shouldn't have, Kevin, in my in my opinion.
And my. How did that actually?
Mine too, and you you did hear what the. What Julian had said to me when I said this should come out of sixty one first.
I don't see how it can.
And he turned around and mentioned something about, well, this is how the the, you know, the 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 landowner can make more money. So it was right there in a Zoom thing, so you could look back at the Zoom.
And and I I just wanted to bring that out to the board. I didn't, I don't, what actions resolved? My, I thought process norm is, we might wanna send this to K P Law and say, listen. Did we make a procedural error so we can learn from it and never do it again? I mean, because I'm gonna tell you, I don't think we've ever had this before us, this type of. Uh, of conversion and A and R that I can remember as long as I've been on the board. So to me, I I don't hold anybody in the mistake. It's just a mistake. And let's find out if if we were incorrect in doing this, and if we are, we'll just won't make ever that mistake again. It's a learning experience.
How how do we get around because of the timeline that's going on?
Well, I I think we send it to K P. And and ask a question, and I think I I spoke with Dave is, they've sent a letter in as of February first. Um, to putting the town on notice to convert it. And my suggestion to the board is, is we send a letter to. The select board saying, yes, we would like it, we would like, because it's doing a conversion. It's not, we're not sending a letter for them to buy it. We're sending them a letter to do an appraisal on the property to enter into negotiations with the Zottlys. So it's a little bit different on a conversion as opposed to a sixty one, taking it out of sixty one A. It's a little bit different process.
It's still taking it out of sixty one A, but it's a a different deal, correct?
It it's a different procedure, so to speak, yeah, you.
But, you know, it this thirty days, an honor for them to come up with an appraisal on it.
Yeah, that's why.
It's it's not not feasible. How, because I'm questioning. The perk test. I want a an outside firm to come in and do the perk test. Over the years, all around the place, I've known the perks to fail. Why were so many of them, all of a sudden, they work? They didn't work across the street, but they worked on that side of the street.
Dave, I guess this is a question you and I talked about a while back. Because of the potential of this A and R being done before the sixty one A was converted correctly through the procedure. I I I think this is a procedural error that somebody, I don't know if it's if it's a select board, if it's Ron. If it's K P Law, somebody needs to respond to this February first letter saying. Um, because it talks in the paragraph about house lots. We should, we as a town should respond saying, once K P Law tells us. Yay or nay, that um, you know, I that there could be a procedural error and. We we're gonna evaluate the property as thirty acres and twenty two acres for a price. For a and we're gonna do that based upon what we know now because. We believe there's been a procedural error when this letter was sent to us on February first, so I don't know if that resets the clock. This is all the stuff K P's gotta get involved in that is all.
Give it to the Attorney General if I ask it, because I wa- I want a definite, a definite answer. Yes, to me, this has not been right.
My my suggestion to the planning board is, is that I don't think this is fifty acres. That we can walk away from in this town because we will have the money. Um, cause it's coming up November from um ARPA money that's been freed up. It just isn't for internal. It's the word I'm looking for, the one point five million dollars of ARPA money that the town's been given. That initially just was from for sewer and cable. My understanding, talking to the select board. Is that's been expanded to the point of can be used for property purchases. Again, that's just, it's it's not, it's it's hearsay. It's not gospel. Secondly, we do have two hundred and twenty thousand dollars coming in that will go to free cash. And be certified for the fall uh for uh for the Dunkin' Donuts house next to it. Again, some creative financing can be done for bridge loans for six months, whatever, for this property. And then thirdly, we have the R D I C land that's coming in too, that's one point X amount of dollars of millions is coming in. For town and and my suggestion is we're selling the town property. Why don't we take that money and invest it in other town property that we can use down the road for schools for?
A barn for maple sap.
Yes, and and. Yeah, and in the meantime, before we say we need to use it in ten or twenty years for maybe a school or something else. To Dick's point, you have a revenue generator right now that will bring money in for that property. As it's purchased for the town, which would be leasing for. as its purchase for the town, which would be leasing for agricultural purposes and leasing for maple, uh, sugaring purposes. So, there would still be revenue coming in. But my, my main point, which, like I said, Dave and I talked about is, I think somebody in the town. Um, and I don't know if the planning board needs to make a suggestion to the select board and the, um, town administrator, that we should respond to this February first letter indicating that, uh, there could be a procedural issue with this, uh, A and R, A and R plan that was submitted. And then secondly, I think we should issue a letter to the, um, select board saying that the, the planning board is taking interest in this land, and you should, uh, proceed with a, an appraisal. Again, we're not telling them to purchase it. We're telling them to get the appraisal so they can see what that is, and then decide if they want to enter into negotiations. That's my sales pitch, and that's what I'm sticking with.
So it seems to me that there's two issues here. One is whether or not the board would like to indicate that it believes there's some town interest to be had by holding onto this property. Which is usually what the board does. Most of the time, the board doesn't really have an interest or see a town benefit. So I think one and one is, that doesn't, doesn't claim we see a town interest, so what do you, you think that is? You know, certainly that should find its way to a letter, because that bolsters the argument. But then there's the other issue of the A and R. Now, I'm not aware of what statute is being referred to here on the chapter side of things, but the zoning side of things is silent on the chapter side of things. To establish whether or not a lot is entitled to an A and R endorsement, it has to have real, physical and practical access to frontage. So, step one is, is what she's a road to road. That answers apparently yes, based upon information that was provided the DPW director based upon a prior request for information and research. So what she's a road is a road. Then, number two. Can these lots, these house lots be accessed physically and directly from what she's a road? So as to avoid sham frontage situations. The answer is that was apparently yes. The submit with this plan, the applicant provided a flash when the house was in the driveways. So, from.
Uh, I, I disagree there because there was a stream not shown on the plan. And you gotta be careful of the stream because it is not a intermittent, it is a continuous. Therefore, it's, uh, the expansion on the side of it is much greater. Um, so.
It's, it's not to disagree or agree with me. I didn't make that presentation to the board that's, that's the A and R. I'm just trying to indicate what the rules are for granting an A and R under the zoning site.
So which, which?
Excuse me, if you don't mind, I'm sorry, Tim, I'm not quite finished.
Okay.
The applicant provided the secondary plan showing the house lot and the driveway access directed to what she's a road. The board endorsed that endorsement based upon what was submitted. Now, so from the zoning side, I'm not sure that there's a deficiency here. If you would like that to be researched, we can certainly put that into a letter, but I'm not sure how you lead with this. If, if the re- if there is no, no issue with this, there is research, does that cost time in terms of the main goal, which I believe would be to indicate that the land should not be converted, because there's a compelling reason not to do so.
Well. Because my, my question, which takes precedent, mass general law or zoning? My understanding was mass general law is the Bible for the state. Which is mass general law C sixty-one A with multiple sections under land and horticultural use defined and land, um, definition of sixty-one A. So, uh, you know, I, and also it gives the procedure for taking it out of sixty-one A to be used in residential, um, use. I, I don't know, converting it to an A and R indicates it's gonna be used for residential use. How can they do, I, I guess my, and again, this is a lawyer's call. How can they convert land to, to an A and R for residential use when it hasn't been converted from sixty-one A yet?
Right, yeah.
Because they're, they're getting, uh.
Ahead of themselves.
Yeah, it, it's double dipping. You're, you're converting it, saying it's gonna be worth a hundred thousand dollars a parcel when you were paying twenty-two hundred dollars on it under sixty-one A. I'm not, a- again, I, I, I think there's a, a misnomer here, because I haven't seen this done in Rutland before. And that's the reason why I think it's a, it need, it needs to be asked to KP. Because I did all the research possible, trying to find something that would, uh, indicate A and Rs and conversion of sixty-one A in the Commonwealth, and I came up dry, nothing. So.
So, so in, in the zoning act forty A is not a lesser statute, so it doesn't pay deference to some statutory scheme that's above it. Forty A is the same level of statutory authority as chapter sixty-one, so that you don't have one superseding the other in this case. And I do believe, and I'm not trying to make, I'm not trying to make the case for the developer here. I just try to caution the board on the zoning aspect of this, and what we have learned before. This has been done in town before involving lots that are in chapter where it's quite common for the A and R to be done first. This has been done a number of times with respect to chapter land. And I believe I have a legal opinion on the computer back at the office, where the town council may have already looked at this question, and I believe the answer was, they're, they're they are not connected. You can't hold up the A and R on the back of the chapter sixty-one issue. That's what I recall anyways. So, these are statutes that are coe- are co-equal on the statutory scheme of things. Certainly, if you'd like for a question to be asked of town council, I need to have that question very precisely framed, so I can ask what the board is looking for, because I need to write this letter tomorrow. Probably first thing in the morning, and, and not, not delay on this. So I, I don't, wouldn't have, I would like to know exactly what the board would like on this letter.
First thing you put on the, on the letter, do you know how to milk a cow?
I would say, and I understand, I understand where, where Dave's coming from, that the A and R and the removal of sixty-one A may not, one may not have to be before the other, right?
That's my understanding.
Understanding if my personal opinion, had I known when I signed the A and R that it was sixty-one A land, and it had not gone through the process of the town, I would not have signed the A and R. I would have said, if the town agrees, all five boards say they don't want it, then I'll sign the A and R, but for me personally, I would rather just, why go through all that process if there's that one chance that the town might want it? I would rather see within the town of Rutland the steps be followed that if it was, I didn't know that that was sixty-one A land. I think everybody here knows me. If I'd known that that was sixty-one A land, I would have had more questions about this A and R, and I signed it not knowing that it's sixty-one.
And with KP Law, uh, uh, and the ag commission has had problems with them too before. And, uh, right at the, at the annual town meeting, they changed, we had a, had a, uh, for, uh, egg egg land protection or, or something, whatever it was, and, and the person there from KP Law changed it right there that night, and we had to come back at another special town, annual town, or town meeting to put it back to where it was supposed to have gone. And this is like the, you know, like the third time when it comes to agriculture.
Although Kevin, i- if you didn't endorse it, most likely would have been constructively, it would have been constructively approved. And if your position wasn't gonna prevail, these lots would be allowed to be created by constructive grant of the, of the constructive approval of the A and R.
Well, I think, Dave, and.
Yeah, there, there's a couple of things here. Number one. An A and R approval does not dictate a use of a property. It is silent. Secondly, my, I, I would bet to you that, that chapter sixty-one A says, yeah, you're gonna have five acres of land to put something into sixty-one A. And I will bet dollars to donuts, it is absolutely silent about the other way around, taking it up.
Well, how do we know?
Okay.
Well, now.
To satisfy, to satisfy everybody, I will, I would definitely go along with, yes, asking town council. So we can be certain on that, but I, I, I think you're barking at the wrong tree.
Well, I also know, and I, I, I'd like to clarify what Tim's comment and yours also about the other way around, because I know with with sixty-one A from my time on the assessors. It's not just a five acre house lot. If you have a five acre house lot, and then you build a house, and you put a driveway and a barn and a pool and a patio and all that, you've now taken away one point six acres of cropland or farmable tillable soil. So it's five acres of tillable soil. So to put something into sixty-one A, that five acres has to be buildable, or not buildable, has to be tillable soil. So the additional house has to be plus that. So I'm curious what you mean by the other way around. And Tim had mentioned at the very beginning where a lot of these lots are not five acres, they're not even close. So of course, they're not gonna be in sixty-one A anymore. They would have to be actually six point something acres to put a house on in a driveway.
And, and, you know, i- it could very well be that they wouldn't qualify to be sixty-one A.
None of them would, not.
Uh, that's right too, because he.
None of, all the ten acre one would.
Helen, the Helen Beiner property again. Because where are they pulling the sixty-one A out is across the road, where Big Cornfield was, and there's also one small, I don't know, it's four acres or something like that, or, uh, in there, straight, they show a stone wall around the field. But, once again, they utilize, you, you have X number of open sixty-one A land, you can have same for wooded. Which side, what wood it's, what, what would?
Yeah, sixty-one A doesn't matter if it's wooded or open, so that doesn't, it's just the amount of, so two of these lots would, could actually potentially qualify to stay in sixty-one A. If the homeowner then decided they could reapply after these houses were built, the bigger ones to go back into sixty-one A, but none of these would qualify automatically, you'd have to reapply.
They probably don't qualify, but I don't think they'd be required, I don't think they would be required any action.
Yeah, that, Norm, that's where I somewhat disagree, because A and R, you can't just do an A and R for the heck of it, it's gotta be into the zone that's required for the town, so there, there's frontage and acreage for a residential lot for an A and R in Rutland, and that's what they did, so i- i- in my mind, they created an R sixty zone, which is residential zone on property that was considered farmland sixty-one A. So you know, again, I'm not an attorney, I don't know, I just, I i- if this ever comes up again, I'm gonna recommend to the board that we get some legal advice, because ah, you know, a- and maybe this one that we send to them handles that, but I mean, sixty, chapter sixty-one A under mass general law has so many sections. Uh, it's got twenty-four sections to it, and then it's got sixty-one B, which is another whole section, and then it's, it's got chapter sixty-one. So, I, I mean, I'm just making sure that A, this is correct, a- a- and B, the town has an opportunity to get a fair assessment on it, so you know, I, I don't know what the words are, we need to ask the attorney, um.
I have, I have one other point I'd like to make here, and this is something that just popped out at me, and it kind of bothers me now that in their letter, um, we were listed, the A and R plan was approved by the town of Rutland Planning Board on July eleventh, twenty twenty-two and recorded blah, blah, blah. That statement states that the planning board has already approved the A and R. I get that, just the A and R, but I think that a lot of other boards that may read this letter might think that we have no interest in the sixty-one A. I'm just saying that, you know, you never know if this goes across the other boards, they read that, oh, the planning board already approved the A and R, so planning board must not have any. I kind of feel like that statement. The fact that we approved this before this came out was done methodically. And I don't, I don't like it. That's my, that's my point, that I don't, I don't like the fact that they wrote that in this statement.
Yeah.
And I feel like it kind of used, they kind of used that A and R approval against us, and I don't, I don't like that, and I think that that shouldn't be done. And I'll say that to Julian directly, if he was still here, that, that stuff shouldn't be done.
Um, well, I, I guess from the first standpoint, I, I, I guess what I, I, I'm asking the board is that we to, tell the select board, and again, this is mine, I'll leave it up to what the board is. That the town should give it interest in this land and not let, let, let this slip by like we did the Davis property. So.
I would agree with a letter of interest, yeah.
Um. Secondly, I, 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 I don't know what. I, I, I mean, simplistically, um, to the attorney, uh, with the drawing, the A and R drawing. Actually, this packet that you put together, Dave, was great, this, this, this number eight. With this package showing the A and R drawing, and then the, uh, GIS drawing. Um. Should this property under sixty-one A in the conversion um. Been A and R'd before it was converted to sixty-one? I mean, I, I don't know.
That's basically the gist of what we would be asking.
Yeah, yeah, Norm, I just don't know how to eloquently ask it with the.
We don't have to eloquently ask it.
No, it needs to be asked, no, it needs to be asked precisely, so that.
Yeah, and that's, that's what.
If you're gonna ask the question, I, I'd like you just to get it in fine, exactly what is your?
Can a parcel under chapter sixty-one A be divided through the A and R process into smaller lots?
Without taking, officially taking it out of sixty-one.
Yeah, without taking it out of sixty-one A, because I feel that the town.
Without taking it out of sixty-one.
Because the town should have right of first refusal, because they have X number of years that that was in sixty-one A. Gave them a tax benefit, and therefore, they should have had the right. That's, that's the question for town council.
Yeah.
So the question is, can a parcel under chapter sixty-one be divided by A and R into smaller lots without taking it, it being the land?
Prior, prior to, prior to.
Out of chapter sixty-one.
A- and Dave, I would.
Prior to taking it out of sixty-one.
Trying to take it out of sixty-one.
I would use the word conversion, because that they're trying to. Because they're, i- in, in mass general law sixty-one A, there is actually two procedures for if they're taking it out of sixty-one A, which means they'd be selling it to like a developer. Or if they're converting it, which means they're keeping it to themselves, and they're just converting it out of sixty-one A. Because the conversion is what we said, is the town has thirty days to get it an appraisal. If it's being taken out of sixty-one day, sixty-one A, then the town has a hundred and twenty days to come up with a negotiated price. So there is a little bit of a difference in conversion. And, um, from the, from the board's perspective, I gave the select board chairman, uh, Linden a procedure that Wes, uh, Brookfield uses as a checklist to go through and actually do that. I think the town should have a procedure for taking property in and out, i- in and out of, uh, converted sixty-one A. So I gave that to them, because I, I really don't want to see us run into this again.
And, and Dave, here's something from Central Mass Regional Planning on.
Oh, God.
This is, uh, Auburn, Town of Auburn, PPA, chapter sixty-one land assessment, Town of Auburn. LPA project updated versions with build-out assessments. I, I've, I've been reading it and going through it, and holy crap.
Yeah, Dick, did you?
Where was this? This is beautiful.
Twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen, that was, twenty sixteen that was done.
Yeah, April, yeah, April eighth, twenty sixteen.
I don't think I have a copy, uh, if you'd like to submit that or, or copy it or provide it.
I've got the electronic one, I'll forward it to you tonight.
That's good, because I've already marked up mine, so.
If, yeah, I'll, and, and if anybody else on the board wants it, please just ask, and I can forward it to you. I, I found it on, uh, the web when I was looking for the sixty-one A information.
Yeah, you could send it to me too, Tim, I'd like, that was Auburn's procedures that came up with the.
Oh, yeah, i- i- it was, it was a, I mean, it's a huge report, but by God, after getting done reading it, I'm going like we needed this years ago in this town.
Well, I thought the town does have already a policy for this. Is this different than that? I, I don't know what you're referring to.
My understanding, Dave, is, is there is no sixty-one A conversion policy that, that I know of, and, and Linda didn't think we had it either, so he was gonna take it and talk to the town administrator and maybe yourself about, uh, uh, getting a policy in place.
Well, certainly that would be outside of planning's purview.
Yes. Yes, yeah, yeah, I got out of it. Uh, uh, this wasn't a planning board issue, this was just. Tim giving some information to the select board and let them deal with it, because they're under, it's their authority for policies and procedures in this town. That and the, and the TA, not me, or the planning board, so.
Okay, we want to write a letter to select board on this as well?
Yes, please.
And and Norm, can I ask that, uh, is, is Tamika on by any chance here? I would really like to get this to him in the next day or two, because I've, I've mentioned, we're under a time clock. And March ninth is when the appraisal's got to be back to them, and I think it's, it's going to be difficult, the next to impossible to make that happen, but. The, the select board really wanted the planning board to lead on this and, and give a letter saying, yes, please proceed.
You wouldn't be, Tim, uh, the letter would be drafted by the planning office.
Okay, so you get that.
First thing in the morning, Tamika would not be drafting that letter.
Yeah, yeah, I I don't think we're going to have the same letter, but the RDIC, but I will not, I'll be quiet on that one now, zip. All right, um, where did I send that? All right, wrong computer, I'll have to get it back. That's it for me. I uh, I, I just, I I just wanted to say to the board that um. I don't think the town can afford to, to let this property go by. That's, and it's the first time in, in. In the twenty two, twenty three years I've lived in town, we've actually had the potential to have money to buy property. With property money that we've sold, so. Just think it's a, a good time to put some property aside for the future.
Agreed.
Okay, anything else on the number down, chapter sixty one?
No.
If the board is going to be inclined to make a recommendation that should not be taken out, because it's a compelling town interest, what? Would the board like to identify what those interests might be? I heard maple syruping, I heard agriculture, I heard possible community garden.
DPW composting.
Uh, recreation and futures, and future potential for a school site in ten to twenty years.
Uh, DPW tree plantation for maple trees, or forest harvesting, Worcester watershed. Use two or three of the lots for low income housing. But there again, I I feel that the property was probable, properly pert, would not pass. But that's my opinion.
And, and anything with the road, we're not discussing, because that's not our purview, correct?
Right at the moment, it's not ours, it'll probably be a private uh, thing right at the moment.
Okay, I'll stay out of that one.
Even though all the letters that we get from Anita says abandoning, abandoned road. Already says it on there, so.
I got it. Well, I think it's clear if the board decides that it conceives a compelling interest, and the letter would follow naturally from that.
Now, do I, do I have a motion to send a letter to the select board, so express an interest in the property? So move.
A second.
Any discussion? In favor, roll call, Dick, I, Marilyn. Kevin.
I.
Tim.
I.
Norm, I. Okay, last item, business meeting. Which. Considering our at. The, I believe it's in the supplemental packet that you got.
I guess, Norm, before we go anywhere, I'll ask the question, did we get any feedback from Quinn, if they're interested in helping us out?
Right, so as a follow up, I, which, I guess that this is the appropriate place to mention it, as it was a business item. I asked the question of, um, when engineering, to see if they were interested. I'm still waiting back for answer from them. I indicated to them that this would be a very comprehensive rewrite. And look at the existing subdivision regulations. I asked them if they were not interested because of time constraints or what have you, if they could provide some references. So the request was made. As a follow up, and we're still waiting for a response.
Okay, great, thanks, thanks, Dave.
Norm, you got my, about uh. That's the old stuff, the, the guy that did the zoning map.
Oh, yeah, Scanlon.
Scanlon, thank you.
Okay, i- in the supplemental packet, the last uh, few pages are some uh. Potential changes to bylaws that Dave thinks might be appropriate to bring up at the upcoming town meeting. And I don't know if you, Dave, you want to just. Go into those a little bit.
Yeah, hopefully, given the hour, I can hopefully be brief on this, and hopefully maybe indicate that this is just to frame the issue. If any extensive discussions necessary, maybe that could be had. At a meeting of the bylaw subcommittee, Marilyn, if, if the group's inclined to take these items. So let me just scroll down here. So first, I'll say that these are technical changes, these are technical corrections, rather. None of these are major. And I think they could all be taken pretty quickly by the bylaw subcommittee. Um, let me just find them here.
Somewhere, I've lost it. Oh, here, I think.
So the first one has to do with the zoning board. So the zoning board under the statute has four major roles. You'll see in your packet that I provided, section fourteen, that pertains to the roles of the zoning board. So their roles in a nutshell, to hear and decide appeals, and according to section eight, which are administrative appeals. To hear and decide applications for special permits, number three, to hear and decide petitions for variances. Number four, to hear and decide appeals from the zoning administrator. So what we have in the zoning bylaw. Is coverage of the items one, two, three, and four. The only one that's really problematic, when I believe it, it's so because it comes under. The revision to the zoning act, which was made before nineteen seventy five, it was never updated. So item number three, with the responsibility number three, instead of just saying that the zoning board has the authority to issue variances. It described the findings of fact that are necessary for variance. You see this language, to authorize upon appeal or petition in cases where particular uses sought for which no permit is required. With respect to a particular parcel of land, or to an existing building thereon, a variance in the terms of this bylaw where. So that first, I don't know how many clauses are there, but probably more than one. That language is, it's, it's outdated, it doesn't show up in the current zoning uh, description under the zoning act. And the language is confusing, so the technical correction would be to mirror the statute. By striking that first couple of clauses there and say, to hear and decide appeals. Uh, to hear and decide petitions for variances, period, defines the fact for variance are as listed here. So it's simply a minor technical correction to bring this bylaw into, into compliance with the zoning act. I think that's maybe one night, I'll work on that if that. So that's the first one, there's two other ones, I can hit those in turn if you'd like, if you have any comments on the first one.
You're saying that this would be for further discussion, another business meeting, or?
Probably the bylaw subcommittee at this point, if you really wanted to get into the details and try to rework it, or to fix it. What if there's any other particular question, just to why this one, I could explain that.
Yeah, then then, it, it did seem to me that I thought it was a bylaw subcommittee, committee issue.
Yeah. So should I go on to the next one? So the next one. Has to do with. The zoning bylaw, section eight. Which pertains to the residential zone, it seems a lot of the residential zone, in particular, item eight. So item eight has several items that are permissible in the residential zone. And it lists them out, community recreational facilities is a general category, and then examples including. Camping areas, parks, playgrounds, golf courses, other than managed golf or driving ranges, ski areas, and bridle paths. For use during the daylight hours. So this seems to be ambiguous. Does daylight hours pertain to flower parks, playgrounds, golf courses, or only to bridle paths? It seems that it only applies to bridle paths, but, but it's not clear.
Well, yeah, and I, I don't know where the term really came from.
Which term?
Bridle path.
It's probably a carryover from some other history.
I would say.
Huh? Bridle?
Yeah.
Like a horse riding.
But when you see, we hear the word bridle, you think of the word bride. Getting married.
Oh, oh, that, that bridle.
I mean, I think if you look at section nine, so section nine modifies section eight, section nine suggests. That a permit can be issued by the zoning board of appeals to allow for accessory lighting of recreational areas. So if you can get a permit to allow accessory lighting, then therefore, parks and playgrounds would not be limited to just daylight hours. Uh, accessory buildings and uses. Such as restaurants, clubhouses, pro shots, is it reasonable to say a restaurant can only operate during the day? Which would suggest that parks and playgrounds and golf courses and recreational facilities are allowed at night. So I think the question is, I, I know, I pointed this one out, because if the Wusocks want to pursue their options in town. This language doesn't necessarily help. I think if we could just resolve what daylight hours pertains to, I think that's. An hour of the bylaw subcommittee's time to help to craft this. So I think ambiguity is not helpful if there's development plans that have interest in recreational facilities in town. So that's why I think that one is important. And while we're here, under nine. It says any of the following uses only if authorized by the zoning board of appeals. Well, how authorized? I mean, the zoning board can grant a variance, a special permit or site plan. So I think authorized should be described somehow meaningfully, probably a site plan review. Because if the principal uses a law by right, should the, should the accessory use be onerous and require a special permit, or would a site plan do? So I think we'd be looking to just indicate how authorized by the zoning board and address this issue of daylight hours. And the third one?
Yeah.
The third one is eleven. So as the board knows, a couple of years ago at this point. The light industrial office, LIO, section eleven, it was struck and replaced in its entirety. To bring it up to date with uses that are incidental customer, well, not incidental customers, but uses that are. Commonly associated as principal uses in the light industrial office zone, such as restaurants. Prior to this, you couldn't do a restaurant in a light industrial office district, but the light industrial office districts in town have changed significantly. So why should a restaurant be penalized? So this bylaw cleaned that up, brought restaurants into place, some other uses, but. There was an amendment made on the floor that the site plan authority, the special permit authority would be the planning board. What that did was to leave references in here that are circular or meaningless. Um, such as the planning board reporting to the planning board that the planning board has received such and such a plan. Well, that's obviously absurd.
So it sounds a lot popular, of course.
So the idea here would be to fix those references so that it reads coherently, and is rational. Which is probably maybe one evening with the bylaw subcommittee.
Well, not to keep it like that, we have to have it closer to twelve o'clock at night.
So all these are technical corrections, I think, there's not necessarily a heavy lift here. And this seems like the opportunity to try to take care of some of the lower, some of the lesser, like not, this is not accessory going with it. It's a different category, so.
It seems to me there's two options, one would to be to have the bylaw subcommittee do it, or we could incorporate it as part of the business meeting. I mean, I would be happy with it either way. I'm not trying to get out of it because of, get out of the bylaw subcommittee doing it.
It's, well.
Could we have, could we have a bylaw subcommittee on the same day we have a planning board meeting?
Sure.
And that way, Marilyn, you're not getting out of it, but we're doing it all in the same meeting.
So, you know, a- a- as long as our regular meeting doesn't go.
Like it is right now.
Like it is right now.
I mean, I will say that, the bylaws started to drop. I think the bylaw subcommittee meetings are rather efficient, you know, you said two hours as the time. After that, you start to, you know, lose attention. I thought they, I thought you ran very efficiently, I thought. A lot of work done was just the work itself, with no other distractions or anything else. You get run out of energy by the time you get to it, so. Whatever you want to do, sorry with me. Um, but if you do them as a separate meeting, you might get more done.
No, that's it. All good points, you want to schedule a meeting now?
Sure.
Rest of the group. Don't all speak at once.
So, um. We do have a fifth. Tuesday in March, the twenty ninth, oh, do we? Yes. So I would think that maybe something like that would be.
That.
Sounds very interesting.
It does. Maybe prior to that, you and I could get together and work up the agenda for that meeting.
Sure.
Is that meeting agreeable to everyone else?
Yeah.
It's, it's calendar. Six thirty, is that a good time for people?
Yeah. And as Mr. Crane usually announces. Is there any further business to bring before the board?
Yes, Your Honor. Something that came to my attention. And uh, are you ready?
I'm all calling in zoning map. Town of Rutland, look where there's a town road, here's Ridge Road, that's where Harry Johnson was, and look where it does.
Nineteen fifty two.
Where the hell is that road?
And it comes out on Route sixty eight.
Yeah.
Right through a, a certain individual who was going to put a subdivision in.
Oh, yes.
And I uh, made some mention to a selectman, I says, how would you like to come up with the money to fix that road? And then off of Glenwood, this one here is another one, was this ever discontinued? So tonight, I had, before I left the selectmen's, I had asked them, please put on an agenda or, or talk about. Uh, having Anita make a certified list of roads for Town of Rutland, period. So I'm not going to go through this crap.
This is no name.
I know, but there was no name on that one either.
Well, that's true.
So, therefore, but um, I'm going to try to make a copy, Norm, to get it to you, and.
Interesting is you could find a different map from around that time.
Well, one, one could only help, but there again, um. Well, one, one could only help, but there again, uh, most of the stuff was cleared out from up in the auditorium. Oh, anyways.
I will entertain the motion.
And also, for you people, um, I'm, I'm totally upset with what happened with, uh, I don't know, saw that or heard about that, we have to do something about your, um, home occupation, major home occupation, I'm pretty sure he had one from us, but that letter does not say.
Explain this a little?
There was, there was a person, was this upset with an individual complaint to the building inspector, and building inspector gave him a, uh, cease and desist order on his business on Glenwood Road.
Oh.
Where's that?
Really hard of that, I don't think so.
That's the, uh, does that pertain to the landscape?
Yes. And to me, for crying out loud, I, I just don't see him through the town, because why did the building inspector give him, you know, permits and everything else, we gave him a, a special permit for major home occupation. A long time ago, yeah.
There was also concerning that business, and I don't have it with me, but I think as, on the butter, I bought the information, that they're suing the neighbors. Uh, it's possibility of a lawsuit about that, and I don't have the, if I tell you, we're, we're a bit. But they are. Certainly, I don't know what kind of a term it, but it seems like they've overreached it dramatically.
Other than the fact that he's got a thousand trees coming?
Well, the, the part about the, uh, I mean, he must be, maybe he's got a thousand tree coming, trees coming, because he was getting, uh, gonna be soon, but the amount of, of expanding the land that he's got under, um, sorry, my brain is tired, and, for example, they are hot, you know, have stockpiles of material which they process, take gravel out of the rain, processing it, and taking it out to other sites. I could, I can adjust to the fact that they're loaded trucks that go right by my house about ninety miles an hour and come back empty. With their name on them, but, uh, you know, working seven days a week, there are a lot of factors involved in this.
Yeah, and let's see, how much tax money is they putting into the town, now your town will stop. Uh, your taxes are gonna go up to take care of that problem, move to adjourn. One thing I don't, I mean, I know this isn't right now, did you just read this, I read this, I read it again twice, and it says, we talked about, "a business certificate was applied for and received in two thousand fifteen for registering a business called Latruset Landscape Company at ninety-four Glenwood Road. A clause on that certificate does, does say, "not a license to operate a business." So how does the town of Rutland give somebody a business certificate that on that business certificate it says not? I don't understand that, not a license to operate a business, what is a business certificate if it's not a license to operate a business?
I mean, you might, I, I mean, I don't, I don't have a lot of interest.
I just never seen that before, you know, it says. Then on that certificate it says not.
For every other business, if I may, Mr. Chair, there is other regulatory stuff. If you're going to open a restaurant, you need a business certificate, but you can't open it until all the regulatory work to open a restaurant is complete. You're not allowed to operate until all of the regulations are met to operate. And what this says, if that, what, all that says is you have a lot more work to do than just this slip of paper to operate a business.
Okay, let's see that.
Was your emotion to adjourn?
Yes, I have a motion, I have a second.
I. Roll call, do you got a roll call?
That's your second, uh, second, I thought you said, second.
Okay, roll call, Tim?
Hi.
Kevin?
Hi.
Dick?
Hi.
Marilyn?
Hi.
Norm? Hi. We are adjourned.